One minute to go. Yes. I guess we've reached the magic hour and we can open this public hearing. At one thirty. Commissioners Basin, David Harwood, James Slater, and Bugles are present. Commissioner Malloy is absent. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. We're gonna go to a little bit of extra business here with approval of the workshop minutes for October thirtieth.
I move to approve the October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed?
Are these things on or off?
They're on.
They're on.
Yeah. Do any of the commissioners see any reason that they have a conflict of interest for O R A twenty-five zero 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 eight, City of Athel area of impact? O R A twenty-five dash zero 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 nine, City of Post Falls area of impact? O R A twenty-five zero zero one zero, City of Hauser area of impact? O R A twenty-five dash zero zero one two, City of Hayden area of impact? Or O R A twenty-five zero zero one three, City of Coeur d'Alene area of impact?
No.
No.
Conflicts? Okay. Then I will turn floor over to Director Callahan for the introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm David Callahan, Community Development Director. With me through my ride is Planning Manager Ben Tarbuthen. The two of us will be going through this, but I will start off by just briefly reminding you that this is an item which we workshopped at your last regular meeting. And for the most part, I, at that time portrayed these things as nearly perfunctory. Since then, Ben and I have gotten into the weeds on two of the A O Is in particular, Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene. And we've discovered a few things I want to at least bring to light for your consideration because we did not discuss them at your workshop. And they are different from what we've been doing at past A O Is. Or in past area of city impacts, now A O Is. So we are prepared to pull up each one of them if you want and show the maps. It'd be your call as to whether we delve into any details in that way. Or we could just cut right to the Post Falls and the Coeur d'Alene A O Is and we would touch base on our thoughts. What would be your pleasure?
What would you like?
Are the issues overlapping? Are they discreet?
They're discreet.
Wouldn't it make sense to go through them then?
Okay.
Yeah. That just seems to me.
But all of them, you mean?
Yeah, how many issues do we have here?
Well, a handful, literally, for the Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls. None, my knowledge, for the others, with the exception that you should have noticed in your packet, the Hayden Lake Watershed Association has opposed, okay, you saw that, to the mapping of that.
Which isn't that more an issue of the city needs to consider that and then they need to talk to the city?
That would be my read of it.
Yeah. But as to the other issues, yeah, I mean, it seems to me if you went through them discreetly, then we can understand what the issue is.
Well, in that case, Ben, would you mind pulling up City of Post Falls, Red Line version?
So, Ben Tarbuthen, Planning Manager, for the record. You are familiar with, I think, the draft. There was a revision submitted by the City of Post Falls earlier this week. It did make some adjustments, as you can see there in the Red Line text, to include, in addition to what was already there, building permit review. And then furthermore, with regards to subdivision review, includes, I guess, just further clarified, boundary line adjustments that result specifically in parcels that have maybe a different area of development that they didn't have once before. The city, I think, recognizes, based on the conversation that David has had with the city, that we do not have an application process for boundary line adjustments. And so there may be situations in which we're just not familiar with the boundary line adjustment that was accomplished.
Actually, in most cases, we won't know. What brought this particular to light, case to light, was the front calendar planning staff had worked with an applicant to reshape the boundary lines of two parcels so that one parcel that was otherwise ineligible for building permits, because of setbacks. Setbacks were literally overlapping. They were able to readjust this in a way that now both parcels were eligible for building permits. That effectively creates more development, but not in actual fact because in actual fact, we had two legal building parcels that met the law then and now. But again, out of deference to the city, I get why they would want to look at that. And especially in a case where it create, like this one I just described, where it creates more footprint on the ground than would otherwise be there. The other nuance to this is, in this case, there are times when a building permit is the only way the city would know if a new structure is going to be within their setback requirements, which are different from our setback requirements. And so that's why you see that first, or building permit in the very first part.
Is there's more restrictive?
Yes, sir. So I interrupted you, Ben, go ahead and finish your thought.
So I guess it does bring some challenges for county staff. First off, knowing how and when to implement these standards because, again, they just may not, we just may not be aware of a completed boundary line adjustment. And perhaps it may be worth hearing from representatives from the City of Post Falls to know what the expectation would be from the county. For one, those that we are unaware of and then come to light, maybe perhaps in the future building permit review, when we do our research at that time. Or for those that we maybe are engaging in some kind of dialogue with a property owner who is interested in boundary line adjusting. And then we incorporate, well, there may be potential for development standards to apply or setback standards to apply for, if you decide to proceed with a boundary line adjustment. So again, there would, there'd be some concerns on the county standpoint, I think, as to how exactly this would work. But that is, I think, enough for the time being.
Probably a dumb question, but why wouldn't you be aware? And if, if you're not aware, who could make you aware?
Yeah, this is a little bit of a challenging subject because the county has some silos, being the Recorder's Office, who's under the clerk, and the assessor, of course, under the assessor. When we, when somebody requests to do a boundary line adjustment, they would essentially just take that deed, have it recorded in the Recorder's Office. There's nothing that requires the recorder to come to the county Community Development Department for approval, first off. We have asked before that the county, the Community Development Department have some review process, but they are not interested in going beyond the minimum requirements of state law for recording a document.
Well, and in fairness, what I've heard from the staff is that they don't have the authority not to record. So in their view, it's superfluous to talk with us first.
Well, it seems, sorry, it seems to me that the burden should be on somebody to inform the county. And that may be the applicant, and then you need to have a rule that requires them to inform the county because you need to know.
I don't disagree, but you can thank your state legislature for our current situation.
And currently, our division, our department, does not have an application requirement for boundary line adjustments. So it's just not a requirement for anybody in the county jurisdiction to come to us first, this department, the Community Development Department, for a boundary line adjustment. We just don't have that built into the regulations.
Well, what, Ben, what my health plan commission is, the regulations in the land use code are expressed about how a boundary line adjustment may and may not be done. As long as an applicant meets those express requirements, then they just go to the clerk and record. But that's where the state law gets in the way of saying, we can't, nor can the clerk, tell someone they can't show up at the clerk's office and record something.
Well, no, I'm looking at it-
They don't come to us.
Yeah, I'm looking at it differently. I mean, you should have a rule that, if this is an issue, you need to know the boundary line adjustment is occurring, that in the application process, you know, you need to get a copy or a notice needs to go to you. Saying, there should be a rule of some kind, it seems like that. It's just a notice rule.
In a perfect world, I would agree. We live in an imperfect world where I cannot make that happen at the moment.
Why can't you, why can't the county make some type of adjustment requiring that? Anytime there's a change in boundary lines, that you are notified?
For two reasons. The state law doesn't allow us to force it. And as Ben led off, we have silos in the county, I don't mind saying, where not all the departments play nice in the sandbox.
No.
I can't answer that last question.
Okay. I, I would just think the county should be able to make some type of regulation that anytime there's adjustment made, certain people need to be notified.
And if we had a county administrator that all departments reported to, that would be possible. Like the cities have city managers.
I'm still trying to get my head around this, but if I understand right, the harm that can be done is ultimately to the person who builds a structure noncompliant with the county regulations. Am I right?
To me, even worse than that. You have an applicant can go record something that doesn't meet law.
Right.
We don't find out until they've sold the property to an unsecured buyer.
I was about to say, then the subsequent buyer who buys it unwittingly, now-
That person finds out from us when they come in from a building permit.
Right.
And that frankly happens about once every three or four months.
Because it's the people who get hurt ultimately with that. And so there's got to be a remedy. This just doesn't make sense.
I have suggested to the commissioners that I would be willing to go lobby the state legislature. We just haven't gotten there.
Why can't you do it at the local level? Have a requirement that when they-
Because the state law has to change in order for us to force this issue.
Which law is it that prevents you from getting no, I mean, you said there's a-
I can't cite chapter and verse.
There's a state law that says you can't get notice?
No. It says that the clerk must record what's presented to them and they're not required to send it to us or any other department before they record it.
Well, if it's not required versus not permitted, I mean, if it's, if the wording is not required, then a gentleman's agreement, a gentlewoman's agreement between parties couldn't that solve this problem?
How about this? We're in the weeds in a way that goes beyond this. Let me circle back around and cite you chapter and verse at a different meeting of what state regulations say, and I can also get our legal counsel to weigh in because he happens to be the legal counsel for this other department that's not working.
Yeah, because when I, when you say that the state law doesn't, that the Recorder's Office has to record what's brought to them, I get that. That's not the issue in my mind. The issue in my mind is, can't you create a rule that the applicant has to also notify the county if the recording contains a boundary line adjustment?
I don't believe so because I believe the state law prevents that, but that's where I need Pat to help me. It's not something I've looked at lately.
Wouldn't that be under-
I've looked at it regularly over the course of the last twelve years and the answer has always been what I've just told you.
I think it's, I think it's worth, you know, circling back and coming back to you guys before with that particular question. There may be something that we could consider because we run into problems where people just create divisions by recording new deeds. And the reason that that's a problem or that it results in a violation is because we have a standard within our subdivision regulations saying you cannot create properties that way. And so as a result, there's a potential violation for somebody who does go into the Recorder's Office. The recorder can't prevent them from recording it, so it would, it would effectuate the actual division. But if we become aware of it at time of maybe a building permit application or something, then we can say, well, you guys, granted, we don't have, we can't force you to come to us first, but you did do this in a manner that was not compliant with the subdivision regulations. Therefore, it resulted in a violation and you have to fix that before we can be eligible for development permits. It may be possible for us to consider options of including boundary line adjustments into a similar application saying that, yes, we can't prevent you from recording something and doing a boundary line adjustment. However, if the county decided to implement some kind of application process for a boundary line adjustment, then, you know, they would be effectively unnoticed by having the code. And then if they decided to proceed without meeting those standards, then they could be subject to a violation similarly to like a division of land. So I think it's worth perhaps coming back with you.
Certainly pursue it.
Yeah, boundary line adjustment's pretty common, at least in my world. You see them all the time. And, and you're talking about, the other example is people splitting, basically splitting a property contrary to law. And then, and then they find out on the back end when they try to get a permit from you or the purchaser in good faith finds out, you know, that they, they bought a property they could, I think, build two buildings on and now they're stuck with no buildings and picking a poke. So those are big issues to me. I mean, you know, and you want to, I mean, the, the, I mean, if I'm understanding it right, the process would be, you would know on the front end so that you could send a notice to them, you're in violation. You go ahead and record it, but you're in violation and there's consequences to that. So they can fix it on the front end rather than having all those, these problems on the back end. If I, if I'm getting this right, that's where you want to be.
Isn't it exactly right? I don't mind telling you, this is an issue that has exasperated me for twelve years.
Yeah, and I think that is an issue that does go beyond what we're here for today. The only, the reason that it's meaningful, though, is because within this area of impact agreement, that standards may apply for boundary line adjustments. Well, that, again, creates a problem for us as county staff because currently we don't have an application process for boundary line adjustments. And so it's possible that we may not be aware that these standards apply much further along in the process. And it's unclear as to what standards may apply for parcels that resulted or that have been adjusted. Whether or not standards for wastewater, water, stormwater, when will those standards apply? And to what level of degree of a boundary line adjustment? And so it's, it's perhaps, I think, maybe worthwhile spending a moment to hear from the city.
Yeah, I think so too. And, and even this Red Line version, I'm not sure captures the plain English we need because, again, please stay mindful that by definition, boundary line adjustments cannot create new parcels. So the only way this makes sense is that instance I tried to explain to you first off, where we had two parcels, one of which had overlapping setbacks with a boundary line adjustment. Now it has room, but it's not technically a new parcel. It's, it's still a parcel. It's just that now you can build something on it. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, I mean visually, like, see, you're taking the boundary line, you're moving it over to a location where you can, you can accommodate the both setbacks.
Yes.
So you make it buildable.
Right.
That makes sense to me. But I'm still trying to get my head around, and we'll talk about it another day, but this notion that, that the boundary line adjustment could, could create a violation under the, under the building code, the Cootney County Building Code, that then comes back to bite the owner when they try to build.
To make matters worse, it's not just boundary line adjustments. There's all manner of things people can do, recording with the clerk. They create, put themselves in harm's way.
And the logical solution is to have some sort of notice to the county so you could inform people on the front end.
Yes.
And that would solve a lot of those problems on the back end.
Yes. So have we beat that one enough? We, is that pretty much what we had for Post Falls?
David, behind you, there's a hand raised. I don't know what the procedure is.
Oh, I don't, I don't have anything else, no.
Okay, so we can yield the floor to the Post Falls staff if they'd like to jump in.
So what do you want to do with this? Do you want to discuss more with Post Falls?
I'd like to hear from the Post Falls staff if they're willing to opine.
I think they are right behind you.
I am willing to opine.
I see them waving behind you.
Not only willing, but wanting.
I'm Bob Seale, I'm the Community Development Director for Post Falls. When it comes to the boundary line adjustment piece, when we reflect, when we review boundary line adjustments in Post Falls, we've changed our code that now, when they go to file a boundary line adjustment with the county, they're required to get our signatures first. So the county is, so the county sends them back to us and tells that applicant or whomever, the owner of the property, that they need to get our sign off on those boundary line adjustments prior to recording because it won't be recognized as a buildable lot at that point. We put the, we included this in here because we know of some specific areas of the city where there are kind of leftover abandoned rights of way or something along those lines that have become parcels. And they are, you know, there may be a landowner that is looking to do a boundary line adjustment in order to create, to take that strip of land and turn it into a buildable parcel. Right now, it's not a buildable parcel, but it is some form of parcel or tract of land. And so we would see those as potentially detrimental to the future growth of our city as they, as we try and develop out because it just would tie it up. This one happens to be adjacent to four other technically buildable parcels in the county that do not have any structures on them. And we would be concerned that they would ultimately put five different houses, potentially within the right of way, and that was the second piece on the building end where we talked about a building permit. We don't want to review all your building permits. We just want to make sure that if they do, if a building does get built, it doesn't end up in the future right of way because if we're having to acquire rights of way come down the road, we'd rather just pay for the land and not have to pay for the land and a structure in order to put in the road meeting that are city standards.
So back on the boundary line adjustment, though, I'm hearing something different. You're saying that under your city code, they have to get the county to sign off on boundary line adjustment, is that-
The city has to, well, so it has to get filed with the county, but the city has to sign off on that adjustment prior to being filed with the county.
But this department, the county, still doesn't get notice of any of that?
I'm talking, I'm just looking at, at city, city-specific properties. They're not in the county exclusive area. It's in the, it's within the city limits when they come in and they want to do a boundary line adjustment on properties. We're required to review it and approve it essentially before they're permitted to file it with the county or to be recognized as filed with the county.
Okay, I missed that. So these are ones that are in the city corporate limits?
Not, not in the-
Yes, our code. Our code calls for it.
To city code. Got it, I missed that part.
No, no, I just wanted to, so that, that was one of those pieces that you were saying, your, your code, as you're saying, it doesn't require a community development sign off- it doesn't require a community development sign off prior to filing it with the county.
But yours does.
Ours does, yes. Well, at least to be recognized. If they filed a map, but we don't recognize it, you wouldn't be able to build on that parcel.
But there's nothing that, that the recorder's office would require necessarily? Like somebody, if I own property within the city of Post Falls and I just went in and did a boundary line adjustment by recording new deeds, the recorder's office is just going to record them and it may be noncompliant with your regulations? And that's when you'll catch it maybe on the building permit side of things?
And, but those that are, but the recorder's office is catching these things and saying, oh, you've got to go to post falls first, essentially.
How do they know that?
I have no idea.
Okay.
But they, but we've informed them of our, of our change in the code. We only changed it a couple of years ago because we did have somebody come in and change 50 different boundary lines all at the same time. And we were like, well, we'd rather look at this as a replat or a subdivision. And that's the reason why we kind of changed some of our code requirements.
Well, that helps.
Does that solve the problem you see here? Because I'm not quite following.
I don't, I don't think it solves the problem because it still would require the county to implement a similar application process like the city of Post Falls has unless, if I'm misunderstanding-
I'm just saying if the county created a similar, potentially, maybe you could create something similar within your code that, you know.
Yeah, they have to come to the county to sign off on, on, on the boundary line adjustment and then you would know. Right?
Yeah, and that, and that, yes. I think if, if there were a process in place, that would address this issue. It, it is going to add an additional step for every other citizen in the county unless we wanted to make it specific to the area of impact for post falls.
Well, this sounds like a larger problem though. It's a larger problem. In fact, it's the whole countywide problem, right?
Yeah, we, if we implement a, a standard for boundary line adjustments and that applies to everybody within the county, then everybody has to do that application before they file a deed for a boundary line adjustment.
Let me ask you, is-
It's right or wrong. It's just, it's just-
I'm going to ask you if it's right or wrong. Is it, would you rather have that additional step for the citizen upfront? Or the hassles that you've had to deal with on the backside?
I'll answer that.
Okay.
I, I would rather have it up front.
I thought you were going to let me.
It, it puts us in a better position to be helpful to people and keep them out of harm's way.
Right.
Because there's lots of people who are well meaning and they go off and record this stuff and don't realize what they are doing. Because I've seen that countless times.
Sounds like you ought to have a process like that.
We'll look into it. I, for whatever reasons I've hit resistance on this, what the city's been able to do like that, we've never been able to do, but I'll look into it.
Anything else in your introduction?
I think we've, we've covered all the post falls stuff.
And maybe just another question for clarification purposes. So again, it does say that these standards apply to specifically to building permits. It would be, I think, maybe a good idea to explain or clarify what building permits are subject to these standards. It does say for new or replacement, but are we talking about a pole structure? Are we talking about a deck? Are we talking about a roof, a re-roof type of a thing? And so what, what would the city like to see for building permit reviews? Because I think, you know, Director Seale was saying that they don't want to see all permits, but it doesn't have the clarity within the agreement or the ordinance here to, to make that distinction.
If you're doing just a re-roof, how's that going to affect your boundary lines?
Well, that's why Ben's bringing it up. So we should hear from Bob.
The use of the word "structure" was the focus, new or replacement structures. Whether, I mean, you noted pole buildings. Pole buildings would be structures. Knocked down a house, rebuild it, that's a replacement structure. New homes, that's, you know, that's a new structure. A building permit to re-roof or remodel is not a new structure or a replacement structure. We try to keep it as simple and as short as possible, but I can understand where you're trying to differentiate some of that.
That helps a lot, Bob. Thanks.
Well, your problem is those aren't defined terms, right? That's what you're getting at. They're not defined terms.
Right. So from what I'm gathering is that if it essentially has a footprint of some kind, then that's a permit that would go to the city of Post Falls for review and then they would have their opportunity to comment.
Would it be possible for the city to actually put in a defined term? Because I'm sure other people would have that same questions. They would want clarity. What do I have to do? And, you know, they don't want to be in violation, but if it's not clear, how are they going to know?
undefined terms lead to litigation.
Correct.
I have experience in this.
We have a definition of structure and, and a few other things. But I'd like, I'll get our legal counsel to talk with the city staff and make sure we're all on the same page.
Some simple definition or maybe you have a definition in the county code, you can just incorporate it by reference. Just say, as, as set forth in blah, blah, blah.
Without pulling up the code and looking, I'm thinking what Bob said, what structures makes this whole here, but I'm not abundantly sure.
Make sure they're the same.
Right.
No assumptions.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm assuming, that's a difficult, as I know assume. But anyways, I would, I had, was assuming that the county defined structure. And that's, but should it not?
It's basically any edifice erected by man.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that makes sense. Any, any, any structures that require a building permit would be sent to the city for review.
Was this the end of the red line for post falls?
Yes.
Yes.
And all, to my knowledge, all of the, what we wanted to talk about for post falls. Ready to move on? For the line. I'll just start by saying that Ben can better define the details. What's the same about this approach? When you look at the current, currently proposed AOI and compare it to the old ACI, area of city impact, is it still speaks in broad terms about originally of looking at zone changes, conference plans, so on and so forth. Where it gets a little significantly different, and I'll try and create a springboard for Ben here, is that under A10-203-C3, and then the following, there's references to a city code that we haven't addressed before. And, and the city code's sufficiently different from ours that I can imagine us as a staff spending some time just going back and forth before we try and implement this, make sure we have a real good idea of what the city's looking for. And then even then, I think it's going to be a little challenging to implement some of these things because we would be trying to catch these things, for instance, at the subdivision level for things like the hillside ordinance, the-
Where are, where are you on the, where are you in the-
On C3, it's the second page.
Got it, okay.
If you look at the hillside ordinance, the slope and tree removal, light reflectance values, so on and so forth, those are all levels of detail that go significantly beyond what we do. We would have to capture it as a condition of approval in, for instance, a variance approval or a CUP or a subdivision. And then on the subdivision, I'm just making this up for sake of a fact, maybe it would be a plat, though. On the face of the plat, we say, you know, you have to meet these standards. So that when our current planning staff looks at a building permit for a house in that plat, they'd know to look for these standards. But I can imagine us getting lost in the weeds because that's a level of specificity we haven't done ever before. So I, I just wanted to sort of set the stage for Ben. Ben, do you want to drill down on anything else? And then I'd like, similarly to what we just did with post falls, I'd like to hear from the city staff what some of their thinking is and how we might work together on this.
Well, for the city, those ordinances apply within the city, right?
Yes, sir.
So there's somebody at the city that reviews-
Yes, sir.
-for compliance. Wouldn't it be as simple as requiring in the, you know, area of impact that, that the, the application also gets reviewed by the city to make sure it complies with their regulations?
Yes, but my point was that to get to there, we've got to note it as a condition of approval, catch it at the building permit stage and then refer it over again. Because we would have presumably caught it at the, when the subdivision came through and that would be our condition of approval. But it's just a little more complicated, I think, than I was expecting when we did our workshop.
Essentially, would a dual review would really be the required?
Ben, can you jump in? Maybe I'm missing something here.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty good synopsis. You know, I don't want to put words in the city of Coeur d'Alene's mouth, but it sounds to me that their hope is not necessarily to get a second round of reviews, but have the county staff implement these standards based on the ordinance of the cities. Through our different communications, they did provide some, some resources. And let's see if I have-
Well, is it as simple as the county just knowing the, the city ordinances?
Well, yeah, I mean, I suppose that that would be the responsibility if this were to be implemented and that's how we would administer it. It is a different standard and so with anything new, it is, it takes time and it often can be different from what we're accustomed to.
And I, I wanted to alert you and we will again with the county commissioners, the significant difference here is we're into a, when you're looking at things like luminosity, we're looking at basically color choice and reflectivity of that color. That's the sort of detail that cities do all the time. Counties almost never do.
So that would increase the burden on the county?
Yes, and I-
Substantially?
Why the city wants to do it because it sets things up so that they can annex more easily. I just want you to be aware and the county commissioners that we've never actually told applicants, you've got to choose from this color wheel, for instance.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you have some of the city that already enforces these rules.
Yes, sir.
It seems, again, maybe I'm just being too simplistic, but it seems like when you have an applicant in the area of impact where these rules would apply, you could send that application over to this person who would analyze and make sure it comports with the city's regulations.
That's entirely possible.
Either that or then, or you've got to enforce them because somebody has to.
But we could surely work something out. The main point I wanted you to get is that this is just different.
Does the county have the option to say no to that?
Yes. I don't know what the city will do if we do.
To amend?
That's why I'm glad they're here.
Good point. That's why the city should be the one ultimately looking, right?
Yeah, so we should hear from them.
Because it seems like they're, they're kicking it to the county to take care of. So in the future, at some point, when that parcel then becomes in the city, then they don't have to do it because we've already done it. Is that basically the premise?
That's fair.
But if you, her point, if you pick the wrong color from the color wheel, then the, the city gripes at you, right?
That's a potential.
So why would you just have them review it?
I think we could be sophisticated, sufficiently sophisticated to make this work. I mostly just wanted you to be aware of and let the city chime in too.
Yeah, and before, maybe perhaps they do. I think what, what also makes it a little bit challenging is that, as David mentioned, these conditions or these standards would only be made as conditions for an actual project of this, of what is listed in this document above, the, these different types of applications. Zone changes, comp plan changes, conditional use permits, variance, subdivision plats. So if it's one of those projects, that's when these standards apply. What could be challenging for us to, or maybe a little bit not so uniform, is that when there's a property that is not, they're just coming in for a building permit. And if they're coming in for a building permit and it's not related to any of these projects, they're not held to that standard. So that means you could essentially have your choice of color, your choice of tree removal or what have you. But if the neighbor went through a variance or went through a subdivision and now those standards apply, you could have neighboring properties where you can't have that color and you can. So it, it does, it does create a little bit of a challenge when we're applying these standards to areas within the area of impact. But, but that, just for food for thought, I guess.
I guess you're saying that because there's certain enumerated projects that the standards apply to.
Correct.
Right.
You'd remedy that by just saying all projects the standards apply to.
That is a possibility. If, if all permits, all projects were subject to these standards.
Because why would you carve out some and not the other? Because you get the inconsistencies you're talking about.
Well, that would be the city that's carved that out by their standards and definition and, right?
Is that, yeah, their, their proposed language, right?
The city's created that, yeah.
And they may have done that, you know, not trying to create a problem just because those are things that were on their mind. Projects that see a lot of, but the logical thing to do it seems to me is just to have all projects subject to the same rules. Otherwise, you even have constitutional problems. You've got unequal application of law. You know, you have property rights that are being, you're picking and choosing who has, you're elevating certain property rights over others with no rational basis.
I'll leave that for the attorneys.
I mean, just from an equity standpoint, it should apply to everybody.
Yeah, I get your point.
Yeah, but this mainly applies when the, this mainly applies when they're already in the city of Post Falls or wherever, correct? So they've got their rules. They've got to follow their rules when they, it's like having an HOA, isn't it? You've got the, you need to know what-
This is still in the unincorporated county. It's just in the area of city impact. For now, area of impact that's, if you will, the extended line beyond the corporate limits of each city.
So it's not in the city yet?
Right.
Okay.
That's why we're doing this, is to try and create some compatibility for things that develop in the county next to cities.
So can we hear from the city now?
I think now would be a good time.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Hillary Patterson. I'm the community planning director with the city. And Sean Holm, our senior planner, is here. So we will respond and answer any questions you have. Thank you for listening to us and bringing forward these AOIs. One thing I do want to point out that didn't get shown on the map today is we've significantly reduced our area of impact map. So we do recognize that we're asking to add some things, but we are trying to be really mindful of areas that will likely be annexed in the near term and not trying to have our standards apply way out into areas that aren't likely to be annexed. And a big part of our area of impacts, it says in here multiple times, compatibility. So we're really looking to have growth that happens in the county that's likely to be in the city in the future be compatible with what's in the city. And so that's why we asked for some of these things. We do recognize that the hillside and the shoreline are different from your codes. We had talked through this with David Callahan, with Ben, and tried to kind of explain really our main goal with that. And we are also willing to dial some of that back and not have every provision of our codes. But there are some overarching things with the tree removal, leaving some of the site natural. The color reflectivity, it's, all these colors are allowed and Ben has a slide too that could show you.
She even brought the color wheel. Look at that.
Yeah, it's just saying you can't have bright white. So no one is really having their property right taken away, saying they can't have pink or red or whatever. You can have all kinds of colors. It's really, from that perspective, that's kind of the, the light reflectivity. Um, it's really, from that perspective, that's kind of the, the light reflectivity, just so it's not a bright white house on a clear cut slope, things like that. But aside from that, really, we have had challenges, and you probably have too, with slope, slope stability. When there's too much tree removal, you have mudslides, you have the risk of that. We have a house currently that's sliding in Coeur d'Alene we've been dealing with for years. I'm sure you have that as well. We have wildland inter, urban interface areas. And so those are things that we're addressing in our hillside ordinance, and that's why these things are being asked to be included, as well as the driveway slopes, fire department access. Those are the things that, uh, we're looking with, with that. Shoreline as well, soil stability erosion, and then views for that. We do allow development within that 40 feet, but it's limited to allowing property owners to have access and more naturalized things, just not allowing someone to have turf and fire pits right at the shoreline. But for both ordinances, through the PUD process or through variance process, you can deviate. So that would still be allowed through the county if you were to include this in the area of impact. When talking with Ben about this today, we talked about too, we, the reason we didn't include building permits in here, we would like to have it ideally apply to everything in our AOI, but we were trying to simplify it. We don't want to add a second set of review or process, but we would be willing to do that if the county took it on. We see this as like a planned unit development. You have planned unit developments in the county all the time, so do we. Each PUD has different standards that you have to apply at the building permit stage. So yes, this would get included on the face of a plat. It would be in the conditions, so staff when they're reviewing a building permit would see what are those unique things. At the time of subdivision or PUD, we'd work with county staff in providing our comments and saying what we think would apply. And if there's deviations, we can weigh in on that as well. So we really want to simplify and streamline it, but we also feel that some of these are important for that compatibility, especially now that we've shrunk our boundary and are trying to have our, our communities kind of interface a little bit more appropriately, I guess. Sean, anything that I missed?
Yeah, I want to do, um-
Oh, yeah, do your green button.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, because Commissioner James brought up a, a good point about, you know, applying the law equally. And so, um, that applies also in the city of Coeur d'Alene. So somebody who has an existing house that is on the hillside, built prior to the shoreline exist, or not shoreline, but hillside existing, their house was a brighter yellow that wouldn't have qualified, and they come and add on to the house. We don't make them repaint the whole house. We'll allow them to continue that yellow, because the house preexisted. The ordinance, we're not going to force that on that person. The reason why it was written that way, where it would happen with a, a public hearing or something that requires approval outside of a use by right, which a building permit can be a use by right, would be to, that would be when the rules were applied, when they had to ask for some sort of exception or a split, or something that would go in front of a, a hearing body. So that's, that's the rationale behind that.
As a potential solution, uh, for the luminosity and those specifics, could you create sort of a liaison so that if a permit does come their way, they can liaise with your person, just checking, what do you think? Stamp of approval, okay, move on, or no adjustment, so that they're not on the hook for it, both personnel-wise and, you know, um, rules? Is that a potential solution?
Keep it at the higher level, so that every building permit doesn't get hung up having to have input from both departments, because we also have our own, you know, we're limited staff, just like the county staff, and so-
Sure, but these are things you want, right? So-
I think these, I mean, Sean administers all, all the time these, is it, I mean, it says on the back of the paint sample, doesn't it, what the reflective value is?
Each of these companies has that assigned already to their colors. In fact, we, we, we approached Sherman Williams and asked for a color wheel, and they came-
That doesn't solve their problem.
Yeah, it seems you need to work it out, because if you're, if you're wanting, the city's wanting this more scrutinized review in the process. And then you want that, but then you say they have to do it, then that, that puts a burden on the county that they either accept or don't accept. But if they resist it, which I'm sensing you're very nicely resisting it, you, you need to work that out, because you're putting a burden on their, and their staff. Right?
Yeah, certainly. And there is a, we know there's a learning curve going into this. You know, Ben called us earlier today, and we had a great discussion. You know, very fine gentleman, he understands his code very well. And we hope to understand ours very well. And where do we meet in the middle? Because ultimately, those are going to come into the city limits at some point. It may be five years, maybe 10, maybe a lot longer than that.
I, I, I think I get it. I mean, you, you have an area of impact, even if it's shrunk, it's an area of impact, that you want to comply with the city rules, building rules and all, because it will become city someday. That's the presumption.
Yes.
And then you're going to own it, and you want it to match and, but you're, but, but nevertheless, the area of impact is in the county. And, and I'm just trying to be maybe a judge in the middle here. It just looks like, to me, like you're, if you're putting the burden on them to have a higher level of scrutiny, then you, then, then it's incumbent upon the city to provide them the resources for that, however you do it. Unless they just voluntarily accept it.
Or provide a notice. Instead of it being an actual implementation of the action, you say you can put something probably or possibly in the process that said you are in an AOI. At some point, you are going to have to comply with these standards. You are county now, but just FYI, if you ever go into the city, these are the standards that you're going to be held to. And then the property owner would know at the forefront what the expectation is. But there's no real burden on, on the county right now, except for to make sure that that gets noticed to the property owner. So you're making it more, hey, it's a heads up, instead of you must comply with this now. Would that be an option?
I guess I'm not quite understanding how that gets us to the point of where the building permits come in and asking for city staff to also review them. So I think we certainly are willing to offer assistance. We even talked to Ben about if our city engineer could review the bond estimates for subdivision improvements. We could do that at first initially, just to kind of get them comfortable. But then at a certain point, we probably wouldn't do that for every single subdivision when there's a bond that comes through. Same thing with every building permit. We don't want to hang up anybody that's trying to build something in the county and have to have two different departments review it. And if we're not getting to collect funds for reviewing something too, at a certain point, our council's going to say, no, you can't, you know, we're not going to allow staff time to do that, unless it just, only city staff reviews it and we get to collect the building permit.
I appreciate you don't want to hang up to, hang it up. I get that argument. But I think that argument doesn't overcome the compelling argument in my mind, that if the city is going to increase the scrutiny that's required, then it's incumbent upon the city to figure out how that's going to be done without burdening the county staff, or giving them the resources, or working out with them somehow. Because it's something the city's required. It just seems as a matter of equity that, that that should be figured out.
Yeah, we discussed that, you know, and, and I'll parrot what Hillary was saying, is trying to get that up to speed, creating, you know, some sort of resource, a checklist or something, and going through that, and running through that with staff, and getting them to understand what, what it is. And, and we said, you know, we can even be flexible to, to a point where maybe things don't apply, or, you know, there's a special exception because of some circumstance that, that we're unaware of at this time.
I haven't worked with you folks, but I'm sure you're incredibly reasonable people. These are reasonable people. I'm sure they wouldn't mind taking on a little burden. They're, they're good folks that way. But, but what I'm hearing is I'm hearing resistance over here. So that tells me you, you, you should figure out a way to provide resources to them.
Yes, yeah. It's new to, to both parties. So we're, we're just as much, at the same odds, trying to figure out, okay, where is that middle ground, you know? Where is that, that point where staff can take it this far, and then their staff picks it up, the baton, and runs with it at that point?
And I, to clarify too, we're not requiring this. This is something, we had the opportunity to do this. We had met with David initially, and then the county reviewed it, gave us back this ordinance that was in there. It sounded like it was okay. So I think as they dove into a little bit more, they kind of, got a little more concerned with how it would work from the implementation standpoint.
This was not in the prior ACI? This is new for this AOI?
This is new language, correct? The old one was more limited to subdivisions.
Or better.
Yeah, we had city infrastructure improvement requirements, water sewer roads, things like that. So this, with the state statute, allows you to have zoning and subdivision standards that are specific to the city area of impact. So that was because we have areas that are sensitive within our area, our shared area, with hillsides and the shore, more so probably the hillside, but some shoreline areas too, we-
And for everybody here, you should know, there's nobody at fault here. The, the state makes us do this.
Right, right, exactly.
And it's forcing you, two different entities, jurisdictional entities, to try to figure it out between yourselves, or you're going to have these issues that come up.
And we can certainly negotiate it further with county staff, if that's helpful, or if it's just the value, the light reflective value is the concern, or if there's certain things we can work with them on modifying the, the agreement language, just make it work better, and then kind of having a better understanding how permits would go through the process.
Does that work for you, David, and your staff?
Yes, I think we have the ability to work through this. I think what I can't predict is whether there's two county commissioners willing to allow us to try to do that.
What, you mean, why?
I, I can imagine two commissioners saying, we don't want the county involved in color, luminosity, for instance.
Understood, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I understand. Essentially saying, I, we don't want county resources being used to scrutinize at that level.
Or that too. But those are really separate issues. I mean, ideologically, I, I stand by what I first said.
So regulation adverse?
Uh huh.
So where do we go from here?
You need to make a recommendation, we will carry it forward.
Would a possible recommendation be to then put that to the county commissioners to see if you can have that collaboration? So then you can come back with a more streamlined, more maybe agreeable, um, study here that then would come back before us?
Yes.
And then we could rehash this again, but maybe have a little more clarity and a little more, I guess, direction on what the city really wants, what the city expects. I would like to see, if the city's already been doing this, I would like to see what the metrics are on the cost to the city. And as, as you have done this over the years, what does that actually cost the city? So the county has a better idea of what possibly the burden from a financial perspective that they would actually be incurring. So I would recommend that this be sent back to the city for possible collaboration, and then we come back for another hearing for this.
Would you be open to a nuanced version of that? Where we send something forward to the board for their consideration, so that the board could choose to approve or deny something, just so the city has something in place that meets the statutory deadline of the end of this year? And then we could always circle back around like everything we do and re-review and reconsider.
Okay, but wait, wait a minute. What you said earlier about the ideology, are you saying that the vote, that ideologically, they would not want to include this additional language?
I think that's entirely possible.
That's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
It's not, because there are two different issues. I think this is a good, you know, idea here, but, but that's a resource allocation issue. What you're saying is it's an ideological issue, where they might not want to strike that, that line. They don't want that level of, 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 well, more than review. They don't want those, you've got a conflict in county and city. City wants buildings to conform to a certain structural form. That's what they want, because they're going to end up owning those at some point. And the county, if it's adverse to regulations, says, no, we don't want to do that, then you're going to have a bunch of buildings in the area of impact that don't conform to what's ultimately going to be owned by the city. And that's not fair to the city.
That's the political call here. And I can imagine commissioners just saying no.
To the, to, to red, they redline it? Or no to the whole thing?
To, to the part that gets into luminosity, shoreline management, the things that go above and beyond what county regulations are.
How do you deal with that? It's a political issue.
Ultimately, the county's call. We're trying to have an agreement that we're, both, both parties are okay with. And we would like to have some version of that.
It seems important that we get this under the deadline, so at least there's something in place, and then we can finesse.
That seems only reasonable, given that we've been working with all our cities for a year on this.
All right, so-
And they have a reasonable expectation that we should be able to get over the goalpost now.
So let's figure out how to do that, the wording for that.
Yeah, it's always subject to renegotiation, right? These things, you can renegotiate any time.
Right.
Is it possible that we would go forward to the county commissioners as were scheduled? But then it looks like you have the other two, you have the other hearing coming back to this body, and then to the county commissioner. So if we had to make any further changes? I know we would definitely want to meet the deadline.
Right, yeah, yes, that's possible.
So I guess that's possible too, if we needed to kick it back to get further guidance from your-
The only tricky part is advertising.
It's what?
Wouldn't work.
Advertising.
No advertising.
Should we continue our hearing?
David, we wouldn't be able to meet the deadline.
Oh, the statutory?
Yeah.
Well, but, but we could continue the hearing.
Yeah, they could continue.
Yeah, we can always do a date certain. So I, we can work through that part of it. I think, I, let me just give you some options. You could send this forward with a recommendation of approval, see what the board does. Option A. Option B, I'm making this up, me, not you. You decide you don't like luminosity. You strike that piece, send everything else forward. Any other iterations of that, you as a board, if you're comfortable, feel comfortable with?
Some, a procedural question.
It gives something to-
A procedural question. If we, if this gets approved by the county, and then you renegotiate it, does it have to get reapproved by the county commissioners?
Yes.
It, this is a, in a way, an intergovernmental agreement. Both sides have to agree.
Dave, you know, you have probably the best understanding of how the county commissioners feel about these kinds of things. But, uh, of course, you know me, I, I like to move forward with things and, and then see how they deal with those, rather than trying to second guess what might happen, you know? And if you know absolutely for sure, they're going to say, no, you know what I mean? That's, that's one thing.
I don't know at all.
But you don't know that, yeah. So, you know, I would prefer that we move forward with something, and then give them a chance to get back to you and us with their concerns, if they have any, rather than just try to anticipate something happening that, uh, may not happen. So that's my point.
That's fair.
So moving forward with the caveat that this, uh, that portion of the specifics would be renegotiated based on who is willing to do what, like, you know, supply somebody to help the county and-
You could make that as, as a condition to your recommendation of approval.
Okay, then, what I just said.
We've got to get to public comment first.
Oh, sorry.
And then we'll get the-
Always like to keep moving.
Right.
But does that give us enough for Coeur d'Alene for that?
I guess unless they were asking to modify anything, that would be the only thing we would want to know, probably.
One cool question.
My opinion, I, I think the LVRs, I, I think that should be struck. I don't like the idea of people telling me what color I can paint my house, et cetera. If I'm out in the middle of a field, um, on a hillside, I, I just think, my wife and I decide this is the color we want our house. I think that should be our thing. So I'd like to see that stricken. The other stuff, the slopes and shoreline, all that, I'm definitely for.
Those are structured. I, I disagree somewhat in that I think, like, Coeur d'Alene, the area, has a look that we like. And so I don't see an objection with trying to keep that, uh, overall. But I don't think the burden should be on the county. I think the burden should be on the city to make sure that happens.
And you can modify it just that way, say that the burden for enforcing this regulation is on the, on the city, simple as that. Then you guys have to figure it out.
So why don't we go on to public comment, and then come back to our deliberations to this?
Anything else you want to talk about, any other cities?
Well, I know that the city of Athol has prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and so I certainly would like to give them an opportunity to, to present. That would be okay with the commission?
Sure.
Please.
Ben, if I might, that presentation was actually, I'm here wearing two hats today. I don't have anything to share with you regarding Athol, unless you have questions. That one's pretty straightforward. I do have a presentation representing a client who's in Post Falls area of impact. Frankly, I don't know what to do with that, or where you're going with that, because I don't know what is being proposed for Post Falls ACI or AOI at this point. So I'm not even sure if I should, you know, give that presentation regarding Post Falls issues or not. So it's kind of dependent on whether you want to move forward with, like I say, I can address the, I can address most of the issues in my presentation on Post Falls, but again, it's a little hard if we're moving the marker here.
Well, we've been discussing two of them. We might as well go ahead with Post Falls and before we get to.
And I'm happy to wait on that, if you wanted to cover the other two cities first, and then take public testimony.
Do we have other, do we have other comments on the other cities that you know of?
Not that I know of, although we had a written comment on Hayden's mapping.
Yeah, right, okay.
I can, I can, I'm going out from the city of Hayden, so I can comment if you would like me to on that, on that. But I don't know this format, it's different.
The chair's gonna guide us through this, but I think the concept was, we're gonna, we're gonna address all of these into the discussion, and then address them separately in the vote, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, because we, how we started this was, there were some changes that we hadn't seen.
Right.
And, and this one from Hayden is also one that we hadn't seen till this afternoon, so.
Well, I think there's a useful distinction. You have, in the Hayden case, you have.
Well, that's a comment. Yeah, you're right.
Comment from an organization that's opposed to the map.
Right.
That the city has, not, to my knowledge, their text.
Yes, okay.
Right. Yeah, I would say that that's true. I would maybe make a comment with regards to the city of Hauser's area of impact. We have, for the most part, I don't, it seems very straightforward. The one, I think, issue that I'd like to bring to the commission's attention is, this is a, a standard that is actually currently in our area of city impact. And what this says is that anything from within the boundaries of this, this area, the area of impact, or the area of city impact currently, any development permit fees of 50% go to the city of Hauser, even though the review stays with the county. We could go a little bit into the, the history of where that came from, but, you know, again, it is something to consider whether or not the commission feels, and ultimately the board feels like we should proceed in giving half of the county permit review fees to the city of Hauser for our review. So.
So how did, how did it develop?
You want me to tackle that?
Yeah, if you want.
Okay.
Sorry.
It predates me.
There's a little bit of history here. Formerly, we had an area of city impact agreement in which we administered a previous version of the city of Hauser's development code. That's what it said in the agreement. The city had long moved on from that development code. They've updated their code. However, the agreement between the city and the county still made mention of that former development code. So it was the responsibility of the county to enforce those development standards of a former code of the city. This was problematic for the county, for a number of reasons, and oftentimes, the city had trouble because they didn't have that part of their code anymore. And so we would often go to them, they didn't, couldn't give us a very good answer, and so we were, had some difficulty in administering development standards within the ACI. So we had interest in changing, and in fact, striking most of that, and reflect more of the county's development code standards. But the city felt like they were gonna be losing potential benefit, because part of it was that there were some permits that would go to them for review, which were more industrial or commercial in nature. And so, as part of the agreement, they would get some of those development review fees, because they're doing some of the review. And so they didn't want to lose the fees associated with those reviews. So my understanding is that essentially, they, they were willing to change the agreement so that we could essentially enforce our, our standards. However, they didn't want to give up the fees potentially for what they'd be missing out on. And so as, I suppose, a bargaining type of an agreement here, they, they were said, "We're willing to change the agreement if you agree to still give us some review fees." And I think it was in the county's interest, at that time at least, to at least get the standards, so that we could enforce the standards easily, because we don't do a whole lot of development within the Hauser's ACI. We were willing to kind of forego that, as long as we could change the standards. And that was agreeable to them. However, again, we're at, we're at this point, have the same standard in place, or at least as proposed. And whether or not the commission feels like that is appropriate moving forward, that could be part of your recommendation, as well as the decision of the board of county commissioners.
What are we talking dollar-wise? What are we looking at?
You know, that is a good question. I don't know that I have a good number.
Is it hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands?
It's probably more on the thousands side, no more than, I would say, probably $5,000.
So let me see if I got this. Hauser did the review before and got fees for it.
For, they did the review for commercial and industrial development, yes.
And they repaid the fees for that?
Correct.
Now they say, "We want you to do the review, but we want you to give us the money."
That's my understanding, yes.
That doesn't sound right. You think?
Well, to Ben's point, the only thing I can add is, we redid the Hauser ACI, was that about four years ago?
Yeah, I think so.
And at that time, that's when this stayed in place as the way to get the project to go forward. We got what we wanted, which was county zoning in the Hauser ACI, or used to be city zoning.
But that sounds like intergovernmental extortion. If you want, if you want your code to apply, you gotta give us money.
Well, in deference to the city, they have no wealth-creating industry that I know of, Hauser. And this was one way to make the intergovernmental agreement work. So I think Ben's point is.
Yeah, extortion works, it does.
It's just to bring it up for consideration, and we would honor whatever recommendation you want to make.
It, it looks like there's a gentleman.
Risk, Kenzo.
Well, why can't, look, if Hauser wants the money, and they want 50%, then why don't they do 50% of these reviews? They can apply to county standards.
That's probably a good segue for the speaker behind me.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Zoning Commission, Kenzo Mahara, city of Hauser attorney. This is a vestige of a very long and involved, good faith negotiation between the city and the counties that spanned several years. There was a Supreme Court case called Hauser Lake Rotten Gun Club versus the city of Hauser. I believe Sue Weeks was involved with that litigation. But in any event, that actually clarified Idaho law in that cities could not enforce their city ordinances outside of city limits. It seems pretty intuitive, but one of my predecessors in office had a different legal opinion. God bless that person's soul. But that, that resulted in some very costly litigation. And there was an old vestige of an agreement that the city and the county had had for decades. And it had been in place for decades. And it had been very, what should I, the good word would be painstakingly enforced, causing no end of work for county, county staff, causing no end of work for city staff. And there was this kind of fee-share agreement. And so, in essence, the city of Hauser doesn't get anywhere near the revenue generated by the, the staffs of, say, Post Falls, or Coeur d'Alene, or the county. And this would have been a significant, a significant revenue loss for the city of Hauser in regard to the one contract employee we do have. And in essence, it was a governmental quid pro quo. We were taking work off of the county staff's plate by being able to implement this agreement, to, to, in essence, comport with the Supreme Court decision. Because under the agreement, the county, it was the county's obligation to enforce a prior version of the city's code within the ACI, within the county's boundary. That, and that's not by, it was by contract. It was, it was through the old ACI. And so, we engaged, the city engaged with the county for, I don't know, a year, year and a half, maybe two years, and did untold amounts of, we had to rezone like 1,200 properties. And we had to do a ton of work. And out of that came this, in essence, the fee split. And this is actually, there was actually kind of a, a sliding scale fee split. And in essence, now we're at 2025 and later, basically a 50/50. And we, when we were going through this area of impact process, in essence, we had just, almost just got done doing this agreement with the county, that the county approved. And so that's what, what, in essence, this is moving forward. And working with the county staff, it's my understanding that the recommendation is for approval and to honor this, because this agreement was literally cut two or three years ago, where the, in all the eminent wisdom of our state legislatures, they decided to change the area of impact statement last year. So in essence, this is carrying forward a good faith resolution that the city and the county did work, work with over years to get to.
I have a question, though.
Sure.
I know good faith is like beauty, it's in the eye of the beholder. Under the old ACI, did the city of Hauser get paid to conduct reviews of these permits?
Well.
I mean, I understand you're saying that they were, it was incumbent upon the county to enforce.
Right.
But what I was hearing here from the county is that the city of Hauser was being paid these fees to do a review. Is that correct or not correct?
That was sometimes correct. And that's why I say it was very laboriously enforced. And it ended up to no end of work for the county staff.
Okay, but I'll take that as that's correct, at least in part.
That's sometimes correct. Sometimes the county got fees, sometimes the city got fees.
Now, does the city of Hauser do any reviews?
The city of Hauser provides comments.
Does it do any reviews as it did before? Does it do the work it did before?
It would depend on the application. I can't, I would say yes sometimes, no sometimes. It would be, it would be, depended on what kind of permit that was being applied to the county for.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the county, because I want a straight answer. Is the city doing the same work it did before to get the fees it, it received?
The, the previous area of city impact agreement?
That's like a yes or no.
Um, no.
So if the answer's no, that Hauser is not doing the work, we all want the revenue. I want more revenue. Anybody want to give me more revenue? If they, I understand they want more revenue, but if they're not doing the work, why should they get the revenue?
And like I said, it goes back to depends on what kind of permits being asked for. If there is a new, and the, the area of city impact for Hauser, especially along the Highway 53 corridor, that's largely commercial and industrial. So if we have a new, if there's a proposed fuel depot there, you can, you can believe the city's gonna do an incredible amount of work to look at the impact on what, what would, how that would impact the city. Contrast that with if it's John and Jayden Smith want to put up a new ADU or shop in the back of their, in the back of their five acres. That's probably not gonna be a lot of work.
So why don't you just do it on a case-by-case basis? When the Hauser does the work, they get the money. If they don't do the work, they don't get the money.
Because what we're talking about here is maximum, maybe a couple thousand dollars, and it would be more work to track that than it would just to say, "We'll just split it."
Is that correct?
That's probably accurate.
Are you okay with this division? You okay with how it's done?
I am, because I think, to me, the easy way to think of it is, this is one of those longstanding cases where that's the best balancing of the equities we can find at the moment.
You're okay with it, you're okay with it?
But three years ago, we had a different set of county commissioners than what we do now. So what was reasonable three years ago, quite probably, is not going to be deemed reasonable today.
I'm sure I will hear about it.
Mm-hmm. What about a renegotiation of 2575, or, I mean, if the work is diminished, they still get something?
That's probably best initiated by the county commissioners.
Okay.
What if we approved it with blanks in there, and with the recommendation that they negotiate the split?
That's certainly within your purview.
Oh, get it through, and then you can make your, "I don't mean to do hard on you, I'm just trying to ferret out all of the, you know, if it's, we're not talking about a lot of money, okay, but you were telling me the revenue's really important to the, to the city."
And it was.
And I want to be respectful of that.
Yeah, it was. And, and, and the balance of work that the old agreement really took off the plate for, for both jurisdictions was worth the, was worth the split. For instance, like I said, this is where it kind of, kind of coalesced out to right now. But the, the prior agreement really started with like a 90/10 split in the city's favor. And then it moved down to like 80%. And then it, because, and that took into account the diminished workloads of each, of each jurisdiction. And so where, where we came out with was, in the 20, 25 and later, it was, it was 50/50. Just to recognize that, under the old agreement, and it wasn't just the city staff, it was, it was our common constituents. Somebody would, would be, would be bouncing back and forth between the city's, the city's department and the county community development department, back and forth 10 times, before they could get a, a permit to do a shop. And it caused no end of frustration, and it caused your staff no end of time, it caused the city's staff no end of time. And again, we're talking about a couple thousand dollars, maybe, split 50/50. That, that's savings in, in manpower, that's savings in efficiency, not just for staff, but also for the taxpayers. It's, it's worth a 50/50 split.
Is this an issue that the commissioners will get hung up on, this split?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's not real money in the broad scheme of things.
It sounds like it's a non-issue.
I still like your idea. Let them make that decision. Leave it blank.
Yeah, I think you can do that. I mean, just let them, you know, if there's any potential they get hung up on it, because the idea here is we want these things to get through.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing, is we have to get these through by the end of the year.
Yeah.
And that's not the county's fault, that's not the city's fault. That's, that's needed from Boise.
Thank you.
And I did have my name in for public comment, but I think that's, that's really my comment, so.
Thank you. Are we ready to go on to public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I will ask that, that when you come forward, because I don't know the color coding, when you come forward for a public comment, when I call your name, please identify which area you're talking about. Jeffrey Harvey?
I'm Jeffrey Harvey, 5925 East Hayden Lake Road, Hayden Lake, Idaho. I'm representing the Hayden Lake Watershed Association. I'm representing the Hayden Lake Watershed Association. All seen our, uh, letters, uh, our letter to you. We have a, a, we oppose a small part of the city of Hayden's area of impact, I believe it's called now. And that's a seventy, roughly seventy acre parcel, which is right at the head of the lake. It's made up of three tracts, the Richards property, which is sixty-five acres.
Can you point them out, I was just wondering?
I don't know if the tracts are all in there, but the Richards property is most of that, okay?
Most of that?
Seventy acres.
The green area?
Of the green area.
Okay.
Okay. It, it's bounded by Honeysuckle Lane to the north, uh, East Hayden Lake Road to the, uh, south and west and Hayden Lake itself to the east. Uh, Richard's property, sixty-five acres of that, there's a quarter acre that used to be the pump station. Uh, belongs to Dalton Irrigation District, it was the pump station location before the dike was built and a short time afterwards. And then a five acre parcel was down in the corner, used to belong to Hayden Lake Watershed Improvement District. When that first iteration of that went out, it became, it was quitclaim deed, deeded to Dalton Irrigation. And it's composed of basically the south end of the dike, Hayden Lake Dike, and the Feller Ditch. The Feller Ditch was dug basically to get water to the pump house after the dike was built. The majority of that sixty-five acres that the Richards owned is in the, uh, Inland Northwest Land Trust. And this is a very important area, because that's where a lot of the water during floods goes into the aquifer. And that's why that's in that land trust, cannot be built on. It's a, it's an ease, conservation easement that does not allow any construction on it. The quarter acre, see that little square in there, very tiny square in there, it's completely landlocked by the, by the Richards property. And this area down here, the north end of the dike, no one's gonna develop on north end of dike. And we certainly don't recommend that anybody develops the Feller Ditch because that's where initial runoff from the lake comes during floods, that infiltrates the aquifer. Otherwise, it runs out into the Richards pasture. So this area, to our view, cannot be developed, but why is it in Hayden's area of impact? That's kind of our position, we don't see, Hayden provides no services here. They don't, the, the Hayden Lake Sewer District provides sewer, county sheriff, law enforcement, Cootenay North, Cootenay Fire District, Cootenay, North Cootenay Water. So City Hayden provides nothing here at all. This area is not gonna be developed, so why it's, why is it, we oppose it being in the city's area of impact? Any questions I'll be perfectly willing to answer.
You know, having worked with conservation easements for many, many years, I, you know, I agree, yet they're basically undevelopable properties once they go into a trust like that, so it's a kind of a, I don't know, waste of time or redundant or something to incorporate it into, into a community where.
Is there anybody, is there anybody here that knows why it was included in the first place?
So, I'm Donna Phillips, I'm the Community Development Director for the city of Hayden. Everything that Mr. Harvey has stated is correct. This area has been in the city's area of impact for, well, I've worked at the city of Hayden since nineteen ninety-eight and it's been in there since prior to that, so long time. The Richards house itself is not seared, it's on septic. And the nearest sewer to the Richards house is the city of Hayden sewer. So if their septic ever fails, not suggesting it will, septic's last a really long time, the house was there long before nineteen ninety-eight though. If septic's fail, then oftentimes Panhandle Health District requires that if they're within a certain distance of municipal sewer, that they connect. If they need to connect, they need to potentially request to annex into the city to get that city sewer. It is important to note that the city of Hayden recognizes this entire area because of the conservation easement and because of the Dalton Water, uh, Public Utilities on this site as being open space on their comprehensive future land use map. Because we all know that, that it most likely will not develop for all of the reasons that Mr. Harvey noted. But also because the city recognizes this need for potentially and because the Dalton Irrigation's little square is within it, if that property were to ever be required to annex because of connecting to sewer, then Dalton Irrigation's little square would only be able to annex if they so chose into the city. And then that other piece, um, is for the same thing. We, we just tried to keep our boundaries as square as possible because having little jugs out of other pieces of property just make it very difficult. So that's, that's why, that's the logic.
Oppose one thing in that, not that, uh, you can split hairs on that, uh, Hayden being the closest sewer. HD, HD one, yeah, Hayden District one, which is the pump station with the pumps to Harv's from the Hayden Lake Sewer District, right across the street from Richards property.
I have a question, is the, the, the old pump, you know, I used to go swimming in Honeysuckle Beach seventy years ago, but anyway. But the, the old pump house site, how, how many acres, that's really small, isn't it? Pardon?
It's a quarter acre.
Quarter acre, how big is this other irrigation owned?
Five acres.
It's five acres, okay.
That was actually given to by Atlas Timber, it started out on Honeysuckle.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm tossing around the idea in my head about the five acre rule too, see, as far as another septic system. You know, because you wouldn't be able to put a, even, if it stays in the county, you wouldn't be able to put a septic system on the old pump house site. But eh, if the other one's five acres, you, you could meet the, the, the five, the county five acre rule for, for parcel in the county, yeah, okay.
It's not to be sold publicly and.
Okay, thank you.
Trust me that rule would be opposed.
Michael Lenz?
Uh, Michael Lenz, Director of Highways with the Post Falls Highway District. And I'm just here to address a concern that the Post Falls Highway District has with the city of Coeur d'Alene's proposed AOI and the city of Pol, Post Falls, I guess, proposed AOI. Um, in particularly, um, the section of Hutter Road between Seltice and Prairie. So the AOIs meet, and correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't seen these to be able to review them, but it's my understanding that the city of Coeur d'Alene's proposed AOI goes to the east right of way boundary of Hutter Road. And that the city of Post Falls proposed AOI, uh, takes in Hutter Road in the future. And I think we all know that the city of Coeur d'Alene has annexed that land, um, east of Hutter with a very large proposed subdivision. And the reason that this is important, um, and we feel that the city of Coeur d'Alene should take Hutter into their ACI, um, is that there's immediate impacts, uh, with traffic there. Most particularly, city, the city of Coeur d'Alene City Council has the ability, after taking public comment, that subdivision started with multiple access points and it's just been reducing, um, as time goes on, which pushes additional traffic onto Hutter Road. Which is fine, they, they have the right to do that, but a response that the Post Falls Highway District would have is that, that's fine, uh, you're putting these impacts onto Hutter Road, but we would request that you annex, take over maintenance and responsibility of that section of Hutter. The response we would currently get back is that we don't have the ability to do that, that's outside of our ACI. Another thing is that.
Can I just say something for you?
Go ahead.
What, can you highlight what, the road and what area we're talking about?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've got city of Coeur d'Alene on the, the left and the Post Falls map on the right.
Okay.
So just to keep that in mind there, sorry, sorry to make that a little confusing, but I think Director Lenz is talking about, you said along Seltice?
Okay.
And Hutter?
Hutter between Seltice and Prairie.
Oh, between Seltice and Prairie, so essentially.
On the right side.
So this here is Prairie, I believe?
Yep.
So from here, I'm trying to fit all that in there to, from this point to this point.
I, i, in that area, to, to the left, the pink area?
Yeah, so the pink area is showing the, the Post Falls area of impact.
Okay.
Um, this red line is showing the Coeur d'Alene's area of impact.
So help me, where, where are those, I see the ones on the right, I got you there, where do those show up on the left? The map on the left?
Yeah, so I should zoom out on this one because if, to show you the same scale, it is at this point right here, to at this point right here. So that is the same two points on this map, here and here, and here and here.
Okay.
Again, Coeur d'Alene on the right, uh, excuse me, the left, and then Post Falls on the right.
So the line, y, y, you want the line to be moved over?
Yeah, and, and the reason being is that it really doesn't make sense to me when two cities' AOIs meet at a public highway, the city that's already there and has annexed the property up to that public highway, in our opinion, should move their AOI across to the opposing right of way line as opposed to the other city having it within their AOI that may not be there for ten to twenty years.
Okay, I'm sorry, so the, what road are we talking about? What, what highway were we talking about on the map?
We're talking about Hutter, sorry, all roadways are considered highways.
So you're just talking about to the other side of the, the right of way?
Correct. And one example I'll give you is Prairie Avenue. The old ACI had the city of Hayden and the city of Coeur d'Alene meeting at the center of Prairie Avenue. So they each annexed up to the right of way boundary, Lakes Highway District and Post Falls Highway District kept the road, they developed on both sides and now we have significant traffic impacts, um, at the intersection locations. And now the Post Falls Highway District and Lakes Highway District, we get the calls, what are you gonna do? This is a safety issue, where if one of those cities would have taken it to the adjacent, or the opposing right of way boundary with their ACI originally, we could have requested that the city annex that portion of Prairie Avenue at that time. So it really doesn't make sense to me unless there's a good explanation from the city of Post Falls why Hutter would be in their AOI. When after speaking to the city engineer, it sounds like infrastructure might not even be in that location, like I said, for ten to twenty years, when the city of Coeur d'Alene is there now with infrastructure.
Well, your argument's equitable, if the city is, is creating the burden on the road in the highway district, why shouldn't the city annex, does the city have a problem with annexing the road?
So, for the city of Post Falls, um, for the city of Post Falls, you know, historically, we've started to annex the other side of the roadway. We've taken the right of way when we do annex up to the site. This one in particular, Hutter, um, while Coeur d'Alene and, and Post Falls kind of have brought our ACIs or AOIs up to the right of way, his argument is that, because we, we do, we, we would be fine with taking in Hutter when we annex up to that point. However, we're not gonna be there for, I don't know, ten to twenty years. Um, and his argument is that Coeur d'Alene's already there, so Coeur d'Alene's AOI should be to the other side of the right of way and ours is essentially budding up to the right of way, so I think.
Well, does Coeur d'Alene have a problem with annexing the, that part of the road?
Um, yes, we are not interested in annexing, and when we annexed in Coeur Terre, we didn't, it didn't include Hutter, so that didn't trigger the requirement, so that's been, Mr. Lenz has said that in the past, that we should have annexed all of it. So Coeur Terre is a twenty to thirty year project and so we're not, at this point, in the future, Coeur Terre will have access and some improvements along Hutter, but the project is not on Hutter at this point. Uh, we contend that through the AOI, we don't need it in our map at this point, the AOI language is that we are to negotiate every five years anyway. And Post Falls also, and our AOIs are touching, there's gonna be development happening in Post Falls as well. We don't know what's happening with the Hutter bypass, the alignment of that, what that's gonna look like, how wide it is, whose jurisdiction that's gonna cut into, so there's a lot of unknown, so we, that's why we don't wanna include it in our AOI, uh, map at this point.
Do you agree with Post Falls Highway District's premise though, that you're creating a current burden with the development adjacent to the, to the highway or the road?
No, because the highway district collects the, the taxes and so they, we, if we were to annex it and we aren't getting anything new to maintain it.
So you disagree with this premise that you're creating a current burden, is that right or wrong?
No, I believe that the cities collect impact fees, that the highway district does not have the ability to collect. And we are capped on what we can levy, it's a fixed dollar amount. So when you say we collect taxes, all the new construction just reduces taxes to everybody within the district. So there's not this big bag of magic money that, um, the highway district's getting to do improvements to the roadway that.
I guess I've got, I've got a major quest, of course, I'm an engineer and I, and I've been thinking about the Hutter bypass since I used to live here before I moved away and came back, but, you know, I don't know what you guys are, you know, what's, what's the right of way width gonna be if they, if they do run the Hutter bypass, two hundred and some feet probably, I mean, and are you gonna have a frontage road that's called, still called Hutter Road? See, I was wondering about that, because you'll have the four lane depress probably, interstate standard, you know, bypass going around and coming into ninety-five up at fifty-three or someplace up there somewhere. But then you've got all of the local traffic that has to, has to access the area and, and, and is it gonna be like with ninety-five now, ninety-five going north is, 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 you know, interstate standard, freeway standard, it's a US highway. But, but there's frontage roads on both sides of that going all the way up alongside the highway because you've got all the people coming in and then they can only get in, get on at the interchanges, so I don't know what's gonna happen. And I, you know, they're still messing around with four or five options, I think, aren't they, for the, for the Hutter bypass? I think they are, or something like that, but, uh, I kinda know where they're gonna go, but anyway, that's my idea. But I guess I don't, I, I don't know what, and this, and these are only gonna be good for five years, right? Yeah, so, so I don't.
They're good until each party decides to reinforce.
Well, yeah, yeah, it changed, so I don't know how, how can, everything's kind of in a, in a, in an uproar right now because of the, because of the process of determining where they're gonna put a bypass, so.
I, I guess you kinda made my point, if this is to be looked at every five years, why would a city that's twenty years out on being there include the roadway into their AOI? When the adjacent city is there now.
Okay, but I wanna get my facts straight, are you telling me that the city's development adjacent to the road at this point is creating a fiscal impact on the Post Falls Highway District?
It will be, yeah.
It will be, but it's not right now.
Well, we're in discussions with the, with the developer's engineer on, on the development plan and the city of Coeur d'Alene as we speak.
Isn't there some way where you guys could work out an agreement with the city where there's a transitional period where they maybe, I don't know if you think assist you fis, fiscally or some way? Because y, y, you know, it's gonna be a transitional process, right? As more development goes in, the greater the burden on the, on the highway district, right? So, I mean, to wait five years or two years, even a year, let the development happen, let the burden happen and then say, okay, we'll fix it later maybe. You know, it seems to me there ought to be a transition to this, to make it equitable between the city and, and Post Falls Highway District.
Yeah, we could look at that, but by including Hutter into city of Coeur d'Alene's AOI, it gives us the ability to negotiate better as opposed to city of Post Falls. So currently, any roadway improvements that are required from the developer, it's in the Post Falls, or in the associated highway district standards that we defer to city standards for whose, whatever city's AOI that public highway lies within. So now you've got the developer, you've got the city of Coeur d'Alene who annexed, um, that parcel and is doing the subdivision. Post Falls Highway District, that currently maintains the roadway and the city of Post Falls. Post Falls Highway District, that currently maintains the roadway, and the city of Post Falls all in a meeting. Um, which is government at its finest, right? Instead of eliminating the city of Post Falls, they're not even close to annexing up to that point and then just dealing with the city of Coeur d'Alene between the, the Post Falls Highway District and city of Coeur d'Alene. I guess it just doesn't, doesn't really make sense to us. And then in five years, as time goes on, if the city of Post Falls starts to creep that way.
Well, let's do the city of Coeur d'Alene right now. I, I, if I hear what you're, what the city's saying is, it's not fair to us 'cause we haven't really developed it yet. You don't really have the burden yet. So it's not fair to us to force us to annex this, that Hutter Road. Plus, there's a lot of variables. You don't know what's gonna happen in the future. Uh, that's a reasonable position. And, and your position is reasonable, that we see this tidal wave coming where we're gonna have this fiscal impact due to development within the city, the city's area. Um, it seemed, it seems to me that i- it's a situation where, where the two jurisdictions need to negotiate um, an equitable distribution of the fiscal impact. I mean, 'cause for them to annex it right now, then they would, they would bear all the burden, wouldn't they? Is that what we're, that's what we're talking about, right? So it's not really fair to say, hey, you annex this road even though the burden's not there yet. So you take on burden before it's burdened by the development of adjacent parcels, if I'm understanding right. That's, that's your position, right?
What would happen if we just left it out of either city?
It would, we would have another Prairie Avenue.
You think so?
And what I mean by that is that the Highway District would maintain the road as, and the cities would develop on, on both sides.
But see, you see, you know, kinda where I'm heading with this is that if we left it county and, and, and get ITD and Federal Highway Administration to figure out what they're gonna do with, with the bypass in, in the interim. That, uh, then, uh, then, uh, we could figure out, you know, run the right-of-way all the way up through there, you know, for a depressed four-lane highway, you know, and, and of course, you guys would get involved, both you and the Northern Highway District. Because you'd probably have to deal with frontage roads and stuff like that, but, but, uh, I, I don't know what, uh. Maybe we oughta make it no man's land for a little while or something. I don't know, I, just an idea, but.
Well, and it, even when you go north of Prairie Avenue, the city of Hayden had annexed up to Hutter and they took Hutter into their ACI, which makes sense. And you drop down south of Prairie.
But the problem is, your, your argument's meritorious in the future. It's not meritorious now because there's no extra burden right now. There, there's a real no fiscal impact on you. You're anticipating fiscal impact. And, and their argument is we shouldn't bear the cost of maintaining the road when we haven't created any fiscal impact yet. So maybe we should have a provision that requires, once there's a fiscal impact, that the two jurisdictions negotiate um, uh, an equitable distribution of, of the impact.
Yeah, and that's, that's great, but I think that's a side note. I think the issue today is if they included Hutter Road into their AOI. It would give us the ability to negotiate moving forward as the impacts come, as opposed to it being in the city of Post Falls AOI. That's really the discussion today. The, the whole working out the details, we, we can do that down the road on the impacts that this subdivision has.
But from a legal perspective, on the Highway District, isn't there still the agreements between the cities and the Highway Districts? Wouldn't be the AOI that would weigh in on?
Right, Hillary's making the point that there are governmental agreements between the city and the, and the Post Falls Highway District. For certain areas of roadways. In terms of the city of Post Falls AOI. While we talked about the fact that it may not get developed for ten or twenty years, there is always that possibility that the developer does come to us within a very short period of time, which we understand. You know, as soon as there's a layout essentially for the Hutter bypass, we do anticipate having further conversations. So they may be here in the near term. Will that affect Hutter immediately? I don't know. It depends on what the developer is planning on doing. And then we also have that potential creation of no man, of, the city of Post Falls may not want Hutter. Uh, should the bypass cut right through there and therefore the development is focused more on a Coeur d'Alene standards and more focused on Coeur d'Alene. So may not belong in our AOI at the end, but we don't know. There's just enough unknowns with the bypass piece.
Put the Hutter bypass in, who's that gonna belong to? Post Falls Highway District or?
ITD, I believe.
That'll be part of the federal highway. State of Idaho highway system part. It'll be like a US ninety-five or one, no. Yeah, US ninety, one ninety-five or something. They'll, they'll put a number on, on, they always put an extra number on these bypass routes, so. I, I would think that any developer in their right mind wouldn't wanna even come close to that, that, that potential right-of-way, right? Unless they wanna make a whole lot of money and subdivide it and then, and then have to sell it back to the state for, for right-of-way. That's a way to make money. Maybe I'll invest in that.
I don't see the merit in the argument that they should annex the road so we can get leverage on them to negotiate.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that they have to annex the road. This is the, the area of impact, right? So as we move forward, it gives the ability for these discussions with the subdivision that was annexed by the city of Coeur d'Alene. Instead of waiting for the city of Post Falls to get there twenty years down the road. Like I said, as the city of Post Falls develops out and gets closer. Maybe they renegotiate this and they say, you know what, it makes sense for us to take Hutter if the bypass hasn't gone through. And then they adjust it, but it, like I said from the beginning, it doesn't make sense to me that the city of Coeur d'Alene is there at a public highway and you don't take that highway. Has nothing to do with the land.
You mean, in, in, you want it in the AOI?
In the AOI that we're discussing.
And this is, this is an AOI boundary that's negotiated between the county and the city. And the problem is, I guess, you weren't part of that discussion. Wasn't involved. I mean, what's the county's position on that?
I can't speak for the county on this one.
I think it all comes down to dollars, the dollars and manpower. They don't want the burden. They wanna give it over to this Coeur d'Alene city. Coeur d'Alene city's not gonna wanna take the burden unless they're forced to. What, what if we pass the, passed it with a provision that, that the county has to consider the concerns of the Highway District in and regarding this boundary? Would the city be opposed to that? I mean, they should be involved in the discussion if they're gonna be impacted by it.
Following this meeting, I'm gonna go speak with our city attorney and just kinda get input from him on what that looks like. Cause it, I guess, the ba, the map is one thing, but the AOI language, I mean, the AOI, the state statute weren't, it wasn't designed to have. I don't think the provisions for the negotiation between Highway Districts and cities. Like, we already have our internal governmental agreements, our development agreement with the, the development team for Courter. We do have provisions in there from the Highway District, so. There's things in the works. There's mitigation that would be included, that would be improvements to Hutter from the developer. I'm not sure. I guess we can, we can discuss further and then have a, more of a response for next week's hearing.
Where are you in the stages of the development of Courter? Like, is there a, an initial set of plats that are gonna be developed in the next one year, two year, three year, four year? What is our timeframe on that development? Cause you both mentioned the same thing, twenty, thirty years. Obviously, Courter will be finished at the end of twenty or thirty years. But we're talking about, there's an impact gonna be well earlier than that because it's developed in those stages. So what stage is that in, um, for Courter right now?
We have a development request coming forward in December for some subdivision plating, a planned unit development, but on the northeast side. So it wouldn't have any access out to Hutter. So it would have access onto Hanley and then to the east. But it would not have any access onto Hutter. Anything at this point going west. I don't think even with the next phase, maybe?
Possibly with phase two at the south end, but I think that's the, the discussions that.
So at least two years out for the first development to even have any, anything on the ground, is our understanding.
To finish or start?
To start.
The start.
And it's gonna take how long?
I mean, it's like Coeur d'Alene place. It's a thirty-year project for build-out.
Till it's done. But I think his concern is more of what's happening in the interim. That, yeah, that could be an issue, you know, we don't wanna deal with that at the end and have to deal with that then. But there's gonna be stages along the way. You know, you have your first phase, your second phase, your third phase. Well, there's gonna be a bunch of development in that first phase. And then you mentioned in the second phase that that might actually be onto Hutter. That's gonna happen well before that thirty-year mark. So I think that's the issue that maybe we're trying to nail down is what happens not at the end but in the intermediary reaching the end and what impact is that gonna have within the next four or five years? And not just the twenty or thirty when it's totally done. Is that, am I?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, yeah. And like I was saying, by them including that into the city of Coeur d'Alene's AOI, it gives us the ability for negotiations as the subdivision goes through its phases.
Right, but you'd agree, it's a, the fiscal impact is an arc and, and you need to sort of transition it over time. Who's gonna, who's gonna bear the burden? How are, how are we doing?
Yeah, and I guess that's my point, is the fact that they're there now and there's a subdivision that's ongoing. It only makes sense to us for the city of Coeur d'Alene to include it for negotiations and discussions as we move forward. As opposed to the city of Paul, Post Falls that's twenty years out.
But, but it boils down to if we had a provision that as the impact to the roadway increases. The parties have to negotiate an equitable dis- distribution of fiscal impact. Would that take care of your concern? Cause that's really your concern is the fiscal impact, right? I know you wanna move the AOI on the other side of the road, but, but your concern is the fiscal impact on, on Highway District. Right?
That's correct, yeah.
So if we had a provision that said, as the, the road is, the, the, the fiscal impact of maintaining the road is, as it increases. The parties have to negotiate a fair allocation. That, that would take care of the problem. Cause it's gonna change over time. The, the one-size-fits-all problem that, that the city's pointing out is if you make us move the AOI out now. We're gonna bear an inordinate burden for a period of time until it's really impacted. Am I, am I getting it wrong? I mean, I.
That's, that's an agreement. That could be between the, I don't even, that could be between the city of Coeur d'Alene and the Post Falls Highway District. This is just regarding the AOI.
Yeah, cause I don't think the city would take the position that w- we can increase the burden on the road and, and the Highway District just has to bear it, right? I mean, you'd be, you'd be agreeable to bearing some of that as it goes on in an equitable way, right?
We already have agreements with different Highway Districts in terms of like.
Say again?
We already have agreements with other Highway Districts. I'm not sure what ours is with the High, the Post Falls Highway District. But there's, there are agreements for who does maintenance and plowing and all.
Right, right. You, you, you would.
There's already provisions in place.
My point is, you're, you're agreeable to work that out with them, so we just need a provision that says um, that as the burn of maintenance, the cost increases on the roadway because of development within the city, that the city would equitably share that burden with the Post Falls Highway District. That would solve the problem. Right? Or am I wrong? Tell me if I'm wrong.
I guess I'm just wondering what the big rub is to not include that into your AOI now. We're not saying that the city would have to annex it, but what's the, what's the rub?
What is the rub?
Well, it wasn't our plan to annex it. I don't have our city attorney here to, to speak to that specifically. But I guess we were, we annexed up to the point of Hutter Road, that was the plan, knowing that we, Hutter bypass and some of those other factors I already mentioned.
Dave, does this? I mean, the area of impact goes up to the right-of-way on Hutter? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So is that even in our purview on this? Because it's not in the area of impact, is it?
I, I think that's the argument, is it should be.
Well, should or it isn't, but.
I, I think you could call it, this is, to me, this is a Lyndon Johnson issue. You can preach it round or flat. You could go with your idea and just punt. And let, let the negotiations work themselves out over time.
Just require they, they equitably distribute the economic burden and it takes care of it.
Backing on your idea, what if you just left it as unmapped? But there'd be a recommendation to the commissioners that these things should be worked out amongst the appropriate parties as time and development allows, or was the fact?
If I could comment, if I may. I just wanna guy, or get back to sort of the, you know, the area of impact is sort of this overlay that, that sets the rules that are gonna apply. Just because an, an area is inside of a particular city's area of impact doesn't necessarily mean that the city is going to annex that property.
They certainly don't have to.
They don't have.
That's what we're hearing.
And, and so that, it, it really, the, the area of impact is setting the rules that will apply in that area before it's annexed into a particular city. So, you know, we're, when you look at ours, we're talking about, you know, controlling those, those pocket areas and, and making sure that those, um, a- areas develop in a way that's compatible with the city while it's in the county. But areas like the, the roadways and stuff like that, that's gonna be handled on a, on an annexation kind of case-by-case basis. It's, it really doesn't come down to, to whose area of impact it is and I don't know.
I'm just hearing too many variables. There's too many variables in the future, right? You know? I mean, you say you don't wanna annex it now. Who knows, you know, the next year, you, you, you may want it, but. And, and, and that's why it has to sort of transition and be subject to negotiation over time, seems to me.
And I just think that's a little outside this purview, is what I was getting at.
Okay, so Kinzo Bihara? Oh, he left, okay. He spoke before, but I didn't know if he wanted to do it again. Uh, Rand Wickman.
Oh, keep it there. Yeah, please. And will I be able to scroll through that or? Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, Rand Wickman, two nine nine two, East Gotham Bay Road, Harrison, Idaho. I'm here representing a property owner within the proposed area of impact for the city of Post Falls. And he has some concerns about it. I share his concerns. This is what's in the current draft that I had available to review, uh, what it applies to. Um, that's verbatim, straight out of there. But my question is, what does it really apply to? Is it just cases where the Planning Commission Hearing Examiner and Board of County Commissioners are considering the application? Um, is it only those cases that are considered by these hearing bodies? Or is it all of the application types? Because some of these that are listed, special use permit, boundary line adjustment. They don't go to the Planning Commission, the Hearing Examiner, or the Board of County Commissioners. So is it, if it's only the list of cases that are considered by these hearing bodies, you know, why are we listing those? If it's intended to cover the list of cases, then the phrase that precedes it just adds confusion. And if it's both, um, that's what we oughta say. If it's both any case that goes to a hearing body and it's these and this laundry list of cases. Then that's what we oughta say, but that's not what it says. And so I don't really know what it applies to. And so, once we get that figured out, and a, a public hearing is a bad place to come and get questions answered, I recognize that. Uh, and so I don't expect answers to these questions, but I think you need to have answers to these questions before you make a recommendation on this. So how does, how do these standards, uh, then, uh, get applied? The following standards apply. I won't read that, but assuming it's intended only to apply to things that are not heard by the hearing bodies. Um, you know, do we event, we spent a long time this afternoon talking about that. Do we invent a new process for evaluating boundary line adjustments? Um, you know, to make sure these requirements met. And it looks like Post Falls is making, or we're making a change to Post Falls and eliminating the, the. the, the frontage and right-of-way requirements there, so the second part of my comment here doesn't apply. Again, it's a little hard to know what to testify on when we're moving the marker. Continuing along these lines, you know, how does it get applied? A subdivision is defined in your code as a division of a parcel of land into two or more parcels through the recordation of a plat or deed effectuating the division. And so, does it apply? Does, does the Post Falls Municipal Code requirements apply to all exempt division of, divisions of land? You know, and so, that is, the guy who's got a 40-acre parcel and wants to take the free split into two 20s, do we now have to comply with the Post Falls Code with regard to water, wastewater, road dedications and all that when we do these free splits? By the way, again, these exempt divisions are not reviewed by any county entity prior to recording of that deed. And oh, by the way, what is a limited planned unit development? There's no such beast in your code. And so, I'm not really sure why we're calling that out here. And so, what is the ordinance required? This is the list of things, when I came today, this was the list of things that we were talking about. Apparently, item D here, it looks like that's proposed to be changed. Is it possible of that list, is it possible to comply with these things simultaneously? I don't think you can. I don't think you can have county regulations and then require city standards for water and wastewater, because the city requires annexation in order to have access to their wat, water and wastewater services. And if that's not it, is the purpose that we require, you know, dry lines in there? And if we're putting dry lines in for our two 20-acre parcels, you know, what's really the point of that? Do we support depriving a property owner of their development rights until that property is annexed? That really is the practical effect of this arrangement. And then we, you know, ought to look at, are the standards reasonable? Again, we're talking water, wastewater, all those things. Is it reasonable to impose that on a division of property of, from 40 to two 20-acre parcels? And then, again, this is a changed standard, so we'll just skip past that. But, again, continuing on this question of are the standards reasonable? Is it appropriate to apply these standards for the, for the smallest of subdivisions, including exempt divisions? Are they appropriate for the relatively low-impact uses, such as lighting for an outdoor recreational facility? That's a special use permit in your ag and rural zones. Or a public utility complex facility? That can be a, a power substation or something. Do we really feel the need to require the street improvements and water and wastewater connections for those kinds of uses? What about establishing a commercial use in the commercial zone? If that property's got frontage on a state highway or generates more than 50 trips, that requires a special use permit. Does that require all of these things as well? It seems to be that we're reaching far beyond what's appropriate for this minor level of development. So many questions. And there are more to ask. And, and what we haven't really gotten to is the, are the big questions. You know, is this a land use policy that we want to encourage for this area? This is most of what we think of when we think of the Rathron Prairie. And do we really want to encourage four to 10 units per acre across that entire impact area? Is that what we want to see out there? We've given up on saving some open spaces and so on? Is, does it, does this policy that the, that this, that this proposed ordinance, does it really promote the county's collective vision for the prairie? I think it probably doesn't. One last thing, and I will shut up. And I will, actually, I've got to be in St. Mary's at 5:00, so I can't stick around. But, one more thing, the prior coordinated ACI had two different tiers. They had the exclusive tier and the shared tier. The standards that applied between those tiers was meaningfully different. The exclusive tier was somewhat similar to what's being proposed for the AOI today, the requirement for water and wastewater and so on. But the shared tier was much less restrictive than what's proposed currently. It didn't have the requirement that you had to connect to water and wastewater and so on. At our workshop last week, we heard that this was, you know, potentially a continuation, really kind of a continuation of the status quo. And I've only done a review of Post Falls AOI. I've not done an evaluation of all the other AOIs. They may have the prob, similar problems with the language of what it applies to. But in Post Falls case, the areas in, outlined in red here are the areas that were not exclusive tier in their prior ACI. That represents about five square miles by my eyeball. And this would, this new ACI, AOI, would impose that same effective moratorium on an additional five square miles, 3,000 acres of unsuspecting property owners that are going to get essentially a moratorium placed on their property for any kind of development based on what is proposed in this AOI. I think that is not the status quo. I think that, I think these property owners would be shocked and appalled to learn that that's what they're getting today. And so, we strongly encourage Planning Commission to continue this ordinance, go back and work on it. I don't know how we can, you know, I have not addressed this whole idea of building permits and so on, because I had no notice of that until I showed up here today. So, I'm not really prepared to give any testimony to the trials and tribulations that you'll be creating by going that route. But I think you ought to also consider the land use ramifications of filling the entire Rathron Prairie with urban and suburban lots. And urban and commercial, urban, commercial, and industrial development as the policy of this overall AOI approach encourages. I think you need to develop a revised draft for rehearing that clarifies the applicability issues that I've raised, that focuses a little more on property rights in the unincorporated area, and balances the desires of the city with a preferred outcome for the county. And I think that's missing here. You know, we seem to be doing everything we can to accommodate the city's desires, and that's great, that works well for the cities. It probably doesn't work so great for the existing property owners and perhaps in the, what's in the best interest of the overall county. And so, again, I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I think there's some real issues here. I think it's very difficult with this format where you're dealing with six of them at the same time. I understand why. And, but I think you might need to peel these apart and deal with these. I encourage you to be a little more thoughtful and deliberative on the overall impact of how this, how this, this is the biggest land use thing that you will do probably in your career on the Planning Commission. You can amend the comp plan and you can change ordinances and stuff, but this will shape what happens in the most important part of the county. And I don't think you should repeat the mistakes of the 1990s. I'm probably the only one in the room that was involved with all of those mistakes when we rushed through the ACI process in 94 and 95. Didn't do it in a very thoughtful way. And here we are 30 years later, finally getting back to that. 30 years. Having a rush job and having it last for 30 years is not a great legacy. And so, I've said my piece. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Question, question. Is your, your fundamental argument, if, I just want to make sure I understand it. Your fundamental argument is that it, it, it creates, well, that we shouldn't apply the city's codes and, you know, what they're requiring for whatever they're requiring. We shouldn't apply that within the AOI. If we stripped that out, would you decline, or would you have a problem with that? If the city's rules didn't apply? It's just, we're just applying the county code?
Yes, I, I think that's, I think that's correct. You know, it's, it's because you've got essentially unachievable standards, you can't stay in the county and meet those standards at the same time.
That's a, I, I appreciate that argument. That's a different point than we shouldn't burden the landowners with this additional layer of building requirements and so forth that the city wants. We should just stick with the county code. That, that's a, that's a different, those are kind of two different things, you know?
No, I think it depends on what they are. I think it depends on what they are. That's, but, you know, Athel asked for a couple very simple things. They are achievable, they aren't burdensome for the county to administer. They said, hey, we've got a couple additional standards we'd like you to impose in this area. I think that's appropriate and reasonable and doable. But when we've got, when we have to start talking about staff's review burden and, and how do we learn how to tell house colors and, you know, and those kinds of things, I think that's a horse of a different color. I think that takes you into a whole different realm, and I think that's what we've gotten into here, is, is we've gotten into a whole different area.
So, your, your position, it's okay to have the city apply some additional standards that are reasonable and aren't conflicting, but the amount of standards they've applied now in this revised version are-
No, it's not okay for the city to apply any standards. That's what the state law says. It's okay for the county to apply some additional standards.
Well, let me rephrase it. It's okay for the county to apply some additional standards the city wants. You're okay with that, to a point?
Yes.
Until it gets conflicting, adds additional burden, a different layers of review, more burden on the, on the landowner and that kind of thing?
Yeah, or, or effectuates a moratorium on their ability to develop their property.
Yeah, it's not a moratorium. It's just, you know, more regulation, and, and I appreciate that, but-
It's a moratorium if you can't comply with it. If, if, if it, if your only option is to annex to the city, you know, then, then you've got no practical option. And if you, if you are required to do that, you know, you've got, you want to do a couple five-acre parcels. Now, you're required to annex, you're required to do water and sewer. You're, from a cost standpoint, you're effectively required to do four, five, six, eight units per acre. All you wanted was a five-acre parcel, and now you're required to do it to pay for those things.
Right. I, I don't want to quibble over moratorium, not moratorium. What I'm trying to get from you is, is a clear position. Because I think as merit, that you're saying, having the county implement some of the rules of the city is okay to a point, where, at a point where that gets to be problematic is where they start to conflict with county code or other codes and create problems. Then another inflection point is where it creates an undue burden on the landowner with additional regulation, and there's probably a third out there. But those, those are the primary problems, right? That you're-
I, I, yes, I can agree with that.
And, and your third point frankly is well taken, that we're trying to eat an elephant all at one time here with, with, I'm seeing now with a lot of issues starting to crop up, I'm having a hard time, I don't mind keeping them straight.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I hope you're not here till midnight trying to sort out recommendations and so on. My, my recommendation, and I apologize because I've got a split, but my recommendation is that you do not attempt to, if it's simple and straightforward, you know, I think Athel's is, but if Athel gets caught up in the melee and gets delayed, then it, then so be it. I think it's more important that you get these right than that you get them fast. And, and that would be my request to you. And I very much appreciate your time, I won't take any more of it.
Rand, you had also, this was for Athel?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add with Athel, and, and that's why I said I, I do not feel the need to speak there. But if you had questions, I'd hang in here for a minute to try and answer upon Athel.
I just, you know, I have an Athel address, and I agree with you, with Athel. I think that's, I don't have a real problem with the other stuff. I also agree with you on a number of issues as well.
Thank you, Commissioners, very much.
Thank you.
Are there any further public comments?
Did Donna, did you want to talk anymore about the watershed, or did that, you handled it when you spoke before?
I don't, I don't think I have anything else to, to add specific to that request.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make you add something, because I'm curious, because I'm confused. I'm confused. I know that area, I drive it, it's a pretty area. Okay, so, so you're saying that, I guess I don't understand why you think, you think it should, the area should be in, within the area of impact because a, a, a septic system may fail?
So, in, we have been approached by Panhandle Health District on several occasions where we had septic systems that failed that were near the city's municipal sewer. And they were requesting that they be allowed to connect. In those cases, a couple of those at least, they didn't have any contiguous boundary to the city so that they couldn't annex, and we couldn't connect, and they ended up getting what I call a fix-it permit to, to fix their septic system. We all recognize the fact that, one of the reasons we created the shared tier in the dark ages was to reduce the amount of septic systems and create planning so that people would connect to municipal sewer systems, to reduce the number of septic systems on the-
But if the septic system failed-
So, so where I was going with this was that we're just looking at the age of the property and the length of time the septic has been there. We also recognize in our future land use maps that that area is most likely going to remain open space. I don't know if that's what the Cootney County map shows. The other thing is, is that the Dalton Irrigation property that is on the Lower Hayden Lake Road, recently, they did a honeysuckle park master plan kind of thing, and they were looking at possible other ways to deal with swimmers and boaters and what have you. And, and that was a site that they looked at potentially developing. That did not go anywhere. It's not happening today. Let's get that out there loud and clear. But Dalton Irrigation wasn't opposed to that. At that point in time is providing another opportunity. So, all we did is we, when we looked at our area of impact on that southeast corner, we reduced almost all of that area south of the East Hayden Lake Road and east-
I'm losing your argument though.
Okay, coming back.
I'm losing, no.
But we wanted to, we wanted to line up the property.
I'm losing your argument, and it's not helping. What I need to know is, for me, I need to know, why should that be included in, in the area of impact?
Well, part of it is, it always was, and we wanted it to have an opportunity if it needed to connect sewer. If the Planning and Zoning Commission requests to have it removed, I, I don't think you'd get a lot of heartache from the city.
But again, why do you want it in? You want it because it's always been okay?
Want to protect it.
Want to protect it, okay.
Want to protect it.
So, so then I want to know, what's the problem with having it in the, the area of impact?
First of all, we see no reason for it. First of all, we see no reason for it.
Well, you just heard a reason, to protect it.
It's being protected. It's not, not through any agency of the City of Hayden, through the agencies of Tom Richards, who now passed away, and why they put it in.
Commissioners, we should get him up to the legislature and work here.
It is, it is being protected, not because City of Hayden's done anything to protect it. It's being protected as the Richards family put it in his trust.
All right.
As for the other part of it, you know, the development of a boat ramp down there, you've driven down East Hayden Lake Road, which is bounded by the rimrock on one side and the lake on the other. You've got any idea what the traffic mess that would make for everybody who lives around the lake like me? You know, that's why we proposed that, so.
I didn't get that last part. I mean, on, on the protection side, the, the logic tells me that if you want it protected and they want it protected, and the Richardson Trust protects it, and they want to add another layer of protection, what's the problem adding another layer of protection? To just make sure it's protected? So, that negates that argument, it seems to me. But, but what's the next argument about the road?
Well, I mean, the, the, okay, I would just respond to her. Let me just respond to, first of all, you don't need another layer of protection. You have a, a, a easement, conservation easement in perpetuity, you can't break that. It is owned by a foundation- It is owned by a foundation or by a trust, end of story. So we don't need another layer of protection with the City of Hayden. Secondly, the septic system. A million gallons of water per day go into the aquifer from that lake, right there, okay? You don't think this isn't one of the most permeable pieces of property in the whole county? It is. The flows, and I, from my professional career, the flows through Hayden are terrific through there. You can't, we've had oil spills in Hayden Center, or near Hayden Center. Where 20 feet away, they couldn't detect them because the flow of the aquifer is so fast, period.
But, but how does, it being an AOI.
This is not going to.
Effect on?
You're not going to have a septic problem there, you wouldn't detect it.
What is your concern about leaving it in?
We just do not believe it should be in.
If it's protected, what is your concern?
We just, the, the district does not want Hayden encroaching anymore on, on our lake, basically.
Because what now?
The, the association does not want, doesn't see any purpose for Hayden being here, period.
The association is a homeowners association or what, what association?
Hayden Lake Watershed Association.
Oh, the watershed association. Oh, okay.
Association that represents some 200 families around Hayden Lake.
I'm sincere, I'm really having a hard time understanding that she wants it protected. I'm taking her word. You want it protected. We can have two layers of protection, great. Trust me, no trust is, can't be undone and broken. I'm an attorney, I mean, people come up with arguments. So you get two layers of protection, it protects that area, which you say should be protected, it's a watershed, it's a really sensitive area. And it is.
This is an easement.
I understand.
By a NGO.
Well, attorneys break easements too, they bust through them.
But you've got to buy it.
But, but, but.
That's a right in profit.
But the logic of it, what you're saying is you want that, and it is, it's a really nice area and it's really important on the watershed, I get that. So, so it should be protected and a double layer of protection is better than one layer of protection. And I'm not hearing why.
Well, I, I think you're gilding the lily here, but okay, if you want to put this in, but we basically don't see any reason for it. What is your, you know, your area of impact is about development, okay? And you're talking about area of impact in an area that isn't going to be developed.
So are you concerned that it might be developed at some point? Is that the bottom line?
No, I'm not concerned with that. What we're saying is that, what does Hayden, why does Hayden need to have an area of impact here, which is about development, isn't it?
Well, what, what your point there is, I don't trust her because, not personal, but I don't trust them because they really may want to develop it somehow, somehow in the future.
Well, there's not a terrific amount of trust between the Hayden Lake community and Hayden because, one of the reasons is that boat ramp there. They want to put a boat ramp there. So there's not a terrific amount of trust.
That argument I understand. If you say, look, they, they've, they've done things before that make us distrust them and they may develop this area and want to protect it from development, keep it out of the, I mean, I get that.
Association is all about protecting Hayden Lake and the quality of its environment, period.
Actually, I have two questions for Donna. So one of them was, is our understanding that you had to shrink your AOIs, the legislature, so you had to, within the two. So if that's always been in it, but you have to shrink it, how is it still in it?
So, I don't know if, Ben, can you go down like the southeast corner of the scroll? Yeah. So that whole area to the south and the east of this, up on the hill, was all within the City of Hayden's area of impact previously. And we removed all of that area because it's fully developed, it's got complete services. There's no way, you know, you would have to, there's no way that those parcels would ever annex into the city. So we reduced all of that area from our area of impact. But we've recognized the fact that this is adjacent to the lake. There's nothing saying that they have to annex. It's one of the weird, I mean, that's one of the things that the state pretty much, you know, made very clear. We're, and we haven't forced anybody to annex in the 27 years I've been at Hayden. So we're not looking for them to annex, but should they request to annex, who else are they going to annex to, number one? And we definitely want to preserve that area, 100%.
How? You say you want to protect it, so what, how?
Well, we, we've created, as we've redone Honeysuckle Beach and we've looked at alternatives on Honeysuckle Beach, we did investigate the opportunities that might be available to move the boat launch. And he is correct. I mean, we did some investigation with that and determined that even though Dalton Irrigation was kind of on board to help us put a parking lot in there and allow for, you know, boating to come off of that, it really didn't make any sense. And as of this date, that has entirely off the table. We're not even relooking at that. But we looked at it, all of that activity, when we looked at the possibility of, of working with Dalton Gardens, we recognized the conservation easement not going to develop in that area, didn't approach, I think there was initial trying to figure out what the conservation easement actually did address in the easement, you know, could you put some parking on it? Could you, you know, because many conservational easements allow for trail systems and some usage of park area. No, it didn't allow for that. So they were very aware of that in those designs as they looked forward to that. Very protective of that location.
So let's say it's removed from the map, removed from the AOI. And at some point, that landowner decides they would like to be annexed. If they're not in the AOI, does that preclude them from actually still being annexed?
I don't believe so.
They'd still have the opportunity because the landowner's initiating.
As long as they're contiguous and as long as the county would approve that.
So if it was removed, it doesn't stop any of that from happening if the landowner decides to take that course of action?
Correct. The only thing that it would stop is if Dalton Irrigation ever wanted to, they could participate, but they couldn't, you know, because they're not contiguous today, never mind.
This being a conservation easement, you know, that, all but, you know, the, the little pump house site and the, see, you can see the line on there, I think there's that, that's the five acre piece there down the bottom. You know, I can't, I can't believe there would be any reason why the landowner, which is one property with one septic tank and drain field on 65 acres, by the way, which the impact of that is, you know, not much, the, to the aquifer and a million gallons being, going into the aquifer from this site. It, I think by, by annexing this, or by, by saying that you could eventually annex this, it complicates the management of the easement to a certain extent too. And that's because of my experience dealing with these things all over the whole Silver Valley and everywhere, you know, we, we've got these conservation easements. The, the question, I guess, is, is if they wanted to add some more facilities down there on that five acre piece there, you know, down there on the right, because of the overload of use at Honeysuckle Beach, which is terrible right now, but, you know, that's a, I don't know whether the, the city could, would have a better way of, of, of making sure things were done right versus what the county has. Because, and, and Dave, I was wondering, if that five acre parcel, if they came in to the county and said, oh, we would, the, the landowners agreed, we'd like to build a, some, you know, like a boat ramp there and some beach access and all that, how would, what, under what consideration would the county consider that? What would that be called? It's not a residential property, it's not a, what is it?
It is actually zoned, restricted residential. I could pull it up on the current land use and zoning map.
It's what, I'm sorry?
Restricted residential.
Yeah.
Restricted residential.
Oh, it's zoned residential?
Restricted.
Restricted residential, okay.
The yellow on the map.
Yeah, so you'd, yeah, that's the piece, yeah, there you go, yeah.
So, yeah, it, it is a little bit challenging to develop within county regulations. The, the, the city and some of the representatives had discussed this proposal with the county to get an understanding of what, you know, what they would need to do to comply with that kind of regulation. There is a stream, as, as mentioned earlier, that kind of runs right through the property. And so that is a, a big issue in order to comply with stream protection buffers, wetland areas, flood zone areas. So that, it, it, it did create some problems in, in meeting the county requirements. And I don't know if that played a part in them kind of walking it back. You could probably ask Donna to maybe elude, chime in on that, but. So, yeah, I mean, again, it is, to my understanding, a parcel that is created in conformance with our code and eligible for development permits. It's just complying with the standards is problematic because of the characteristics of the area.
Well, of course, my question is, is what, what is the best way to, to make sure that, that we don't impact the inflow for, for the aquifer from that five acre part? Evidently, that's the, the piece where the house is in, up there, the other green crosshatch thing?
This is a, a wetland area that's mapped by the National.
Oh, okay, that's a wetland, okay.
And the house is, is over here.
Right there, okay. How far is it from that house? Does any, just approximately, if you ever wanted to run a sanitary sewer out to that house, how far a run would that be?
There are two sewer.
The water district has a, Hayden Lake Sewer District has an intercept that comes down to H1, right, right there.
I'm just wondering if anybody could afford to do that.
H1 is right there, it'll be right there.
Okay.
Right across the street, right across Honeysuckle Beach.
So here's my question for, for, for our county folks here. There's agreement, they want to protect this land. How is it best protected? Inside of AOI or outside?
You know, I, I don't know, the, the city, if we go back to what the proposed draft says, and let me just pull that up here for a moment. Okay. So, again, this, this does bring applications, or the standards apply to applications when a planning and zoning commission, hearing examiner, or board of county commissioners considers these following applications. If it's not one of these applications, then the city's code does not apply, or the, the city's standards, as mentioned below here, do not apply. And so it's hard for me to tell you, because without a proposal actually being presented, what is going to be more protected and, or less protected?
But are you saying that if it's in the AOI, there are additional restrictions and that may be more protective? Is that what you're saying?
That.
There's that.
It's possible, yeah.
But there's also an automatic referral. If it's outside of the AOI, there is no referral, just county regulations.
What do you mean, no, no, automatic referral? What's referral?
Sending it to the city for their review.
Say again?
The whole purpose of any AOI.
Right.
Is we, we agree that under these conditions.
They can develop it.
They can respond to what we're processing. The additional things you see in some of the cities go on to say the stuff we've talked about.
Right.
But in this particular case, if it's outside of the AOI, there's no referral at all. So the city doesn't even get notice.
Has no say.
Right.
So if somebody did want to develop this and it's outside the AOI, they're not going to have a say.
Only county regulations that apply.
Right, so you're, so again, you're saying that, that there'll be additional layer of regulations which may make it harder to develop?
Yes.
Yeah, I would, it's fair to say I would guess that the City of Hayden's regulations are of a higher standard than the county regulations when it comes to development in sensitive areas. I don't know that to be sure, but Donna perhaps could maybe give you an, an expectation for that. This would only apply, again, C here talks about subdivision regulations. So if a subdivision is proposed, then it would require public improvements for water, wastewater, stormwater, and so on. And, and to Ran's earlier point, is that if a subdivision is proposed and these standards are required, it's likely going to require annexation because the city's not going to provide these services without it being in their incorporated limits.
And I appreciate it depends on what the proposal is, but the bottom line is, inside the AOI, there's more requirements, which logically tells me it's more protective than outside the AOI. And I'm just, I mean, if I'm wrong on that, I don't want to hear.
I, I think you're correct.
Could Donna, could you go into that, what Ben was referring to?
So with any application that would come forward, we obviously would look to see what portion of it was part of the conservation easement. And if that conservation easement would preclude them from being able to develop it at all, we would flag that right off the bat, obviously. If they're in areas that are not where the conservation easement may or may not be located, and again, I haven't seen that easement, so it's important to know, I have no idea how much of this land is covered with that easement. Then we would look to see what additional requirements might be required if they're doing a subdivision or, or what have you. We would go through our standards of approval. Because the site is so large, if they received approvals from Panhandle Health District that would allow them to put septic systems on, for example, we would defer to that because they're in the county and they've met most of those accrued requirements. However, if they are close to municipal sewer and Panhandle Health District pushes back, then we would have to respond accordingly. But we've done that all around in our area of impact to date. That's not new. And then we would look at the insurance that any stormwater that may be created by whatever the heck they're doing, you know, didn't impact where that wasn't supposed to. So we'd review all of those utilities, stormwater, wastewater. We don't do water systems, so we would defer to the water department or agency that would be servicing that, obviously. If they're just doing site development, that's where D comes in. Our Title 11 has to do with site development and when right-of-way under street frontage dedications are required.
Okay, so I don't have the code in front of me. How is that different than county code? Or how are those actions any different? Is that up and over what you guys would be doing or is that basically similar to what you would do anyway?
Typically more.
Pardon?
It's typically more.
That's more, what Donna just said is more, or you do more?
Cities almost always are more than what we do.
Okay, so everything she just mentioned would be over what the county would basically do?
As a general rule.
Okay.
And, and going back to the earlier discussion, Madam Chair, if I may, I think we need to separate out protected versus regulated. The AOI set up additional regulation, assuming that these kinds of things go through. Whether that protects or not is a different question.
And how?
Well, regulations set up things like curb and gutter and lighting and noise and traffic volumes. That may or may not protect the land.
Especially out there.
Sorry, yeah, it makes it more difficult to develop it. And, and in that sense, it's more protective. I mean, the, the conservation easement is what protects the land.
Yes, and to me, that's protection beyond regulation.
But, I understand, but the, the more layers of regulation you have, the harder it is to develop and as a byproduct, it's, it's, it's more protective of the land, of the status quo.
I'll give you that it could slow it down and make it more costly.
Right.
Don't know that it actually protects it.
But if it's outside the AOI, they can still develop it. They can apply to the county to put whatever in there.
Yes.
And you don't have these extra layers.
That's right.
Okay.
But you would have to violate the conservation easement?
Right, and I, to me, that's the, the trump card here.
What's the trump card?
Well, the Inland Northwest Land Conservancy would be on your tail.
The easement itself prohibits any, presumably any development. Can't even get started in the county with an easement.
Because you, yeah, you, you record your easements. With the county.
Could you get started in the city?
No.
Either way, so either way, you can't, you're saying you can't get started.
If it's a valid conservation easement, it's undevelopable.
Unless the conservation somehow changes.
Or is lifted or removed.
Yeah, there are two, there's actually two trump cards, if you will. One is a conservation easement, the other one is just the geography of it. It's full of water, it's, you know, if you.
Part of development.
Yeah, I mean, I go by there and look, it's beautiful country, but you're not going to be able to build on it probably, you know, probably not going to meet the, the county codes.
Ben, can you bring up the map one more time? So again, keeping in mind, I don't know where the conservation easement is, but that map shows that there's like one, two, three, four, five parcels that are on there today. So, again, I don't know where the conservation easement is today and it may only be for the, you know, I don't know, for a portion of it and a portion of it could be developed. The county code today shows this property as being restrictive residential. Our future land use map that's adopted today shows this area as being open space recreation. If it were to annex into the city, it would have to do an amendment to the comp. If it were to annex into the city, it would have to do an amendment to the comp plan to some use if it were going to develop. So we show it today as being open space recreation.
So if it's annexed, you would keep it open space?
Unless they did a development proposal to annex to develop it.
Okay.
So the, the entire sixty-five acres advised by Sandy Emerson of the Trust, who's the director of the Trust, all sixty-five acres.
Can you come up to here, please?
All sixty-five acres of the Richards property is in the trust, and advised that by Sandy Emerson.
Is the sixty-five acres that entire green piece there?
Except for the very tiny quarter acre, and this five acres down the corner.
Got it, okay.
So it's all, it's.
Seventy acres in all.
It's all of, it, yeah, but it, it's all of that piece on the other map that shows.
Trust's easement.
It's not just a portion of that, I just wanted, yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks.
So, another theoretical, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm just asking, if it were to stay out of the AOI and stay under county jurisdiction, and the county then rezone that into open space, what does that change?
Well, we don't actually have an open space zoning, so set that aside.
So we can't do that?
But currently, anyway.
Is that something that actually we as a board could, since we're working on the comp plan, maybe this is a discussion for later?
It could be a discussion item in the comp plan.
Okay. Excuse me.
Okay, are there any other comments? Then we will close the public.
Sorry, I, I have one more. I had one more comment, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to sort of address some of Rand's comments with the, the change from the sort of shared tier to the exclusive tier. We would be comfortable with, again, sort of, if, keeping the ball rolling to, to the Board of County Commissioners, I think that we can work together on some language surrounding that, sort of, all subdivisions, to, to maybe put a, an upper cap of, define, a better, a better defining what that would entail, because we're really talking about the, the smaller subdivisions, not the sort of forty acres into, into twenty acre lots, and those sort of large lot subdivisions. So I think we can work that out in the interim.
So, so you see merit in some of Rand's points there?
I, I do see merit, so, in talking about the, the sub, the, talking about applying the subdivision regulations, because we're switching from this sort of exclusive tier to a shared, exclusive tier, shared tier, to, to this new sort of AOI, we're. I can see how, how all subdivisions could, could entail some of those larger lot subdivisions, which, which shouldn't really trigger public improvements. So I think that we can work through that in the interim.
What about that initial paragraph?
That I, I, I don't, I didn't necessarily agree with, I, I, I think it's, I think it is easy to understand how that applies. It's basically any, whenever any of these boards considers any of these things, I don't, I didn't, I didn't agree with that assessment, but I did agree with the, the later assessment.
That's for our discussion.
Just maybe to follow up, I think what, what Rand's point here is, there are some things in this list that don't automatically come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the Hearing Examiner, or the Board of County Commissioners. They're administrative, and the, the decision is then made by the Community Development Director. Things like a special notice permit, even minor subdivisions, which are for fewer lots, or boundary line adjustments, obviously, building permits don't go to the Board of County Commissioners for review. It, it's, it's, there's some things that just flat out never go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Hearing Examiner Board, and so therefore.
Why are they?
Why are they there? They shouldn't be there then, if that's the case.
We would just request that it, the planning, or Planning Director be added to that.
Oh, that's, so I see your point, Hearing Examiner, Board of County Commissioners, or Planning, or Community Development Director.
However, however the.
Right.
The applications get routed.
Right, that, that would fix it.
So some of those should be carved out, is what you're saying?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so, I think what is being said is to leave them there.
But add Community Development Director, which does pick up all these other things.
But do what, add in the?
So add, add the.
After Board of County Commissioners, add Community Development Director.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
And if I, Madam Chair, if I could piggyback on that comment, I, I agree with a lot of what Rand said, in the sense that in an ideal world, we would be doing our comp plan update before these areas of impact. I didn't get to make that call, the state legislature did. I am hopeful that the cities and the county can still talk as our new comp plan rolls out, and then if we find useful, practical things to do that make for a better community, that all the players will come to the table appropriately.
Okay, if there are no other.
May I just add for Coeur d'Alene, I think Coeur d'Alene and probably the other cities would also like that edit that Post Falls indicated, because then they'd all be consistent, right, for having any of the ones that.
It would be.
Development Director would, okay, thank you, that's all.
Is that, was that in Hayden's? Okay.
Yeah, it's standard language we started with.
But adding the planning, community development into that?
Therefore, would work for all of them, don't you think?
Yeah.
You wanna take a five-minute recess and we'll check? Yeah, well, that's actually written into our code.
Take an old man recess.
You had, you seemed hesitant on that, Ben. I think we're all doing that.
Sorry. I, I, I think there are still some things that may, by lumping the director into that list of applicability, there still may be some things that all the cities are not interested in really seeing. You know, one of the, one of the points that Rand brought up too, was exempt divisions of land, and I think the city of Post Falls was saying, yeah, we probably aren't interested in exempt divisions of land, like large lot divisions, or family exemptions, stuff like that. But it doesn't say that here, right, it just says anything.
Subdivision.
So, i- if that's the case, we probably would want to add something in addition to that, making some exclusions, so that it's not just subdivisions, it's only subdivisions of this kind. And, and I think that there may be the potential for that same kind of issue to apply to the other cities' AOIs if we're also wrapping the director, any decision made by the director, because the, the director makes a lot of decisions.
Right.
And so I, I don't, it's hard for me to have a, a good formulated thought on that at the moment, I just wasn't prepared for that. But I, I think maybe a recess of some kind is probably in order anyways, maybe we could think about that and that.
Well, I think it kind of comes back to the initial conversation we had with Post Falls was, again, terminology, and making certain that we're on the same page with the terms, and so what, you know, we're not making assumptions. I mean, you, we can get too deep in the weeds and start, you know, trying to define everything, and, and, you know, we get out of what we're really trying to accomplish, but I think some of that stuff, when it's too broad, that's where we get a lot of issues down the road, and then the litigation. And if there's any way we can mitigate that now, I think that we have the opportunity to do that, I would like to do that. But yes, I think having a ten-minute recess, five-minute recess would be great.
Do you want to close the, the public comment period? Someone moved to do that?
I moved to close the public.
A second.
Comment.
Commissioner Harwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowles?
Aye.
Commissioner James?
Aye.
Commissioner Batson?
Aye.
Commissioner Slater, Slater, sorry?
Aye.
Chair David?
Aye.
Okay, let's take a break for five minutes, ten minutes?
Yeah, four thirty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.